Could you call the roll?
Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burrus. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Jean Baptiste. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham. Nine to zero, madam.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the February 1st, 2010, meeting of the Evanston City Council. It's a budget meeting and a public session. I am delighted to have so many of you here to talk about the budget. There have been other years where sadly very few people have come. I am sorry, however, that the budget is in such difficult shape that you all felt you had to come, but it is in bad shape and we appreciate having you here to give us your advice. City manager, would you like to discuss the altered time schedule for the February 8th meeting because this same group may want to come then?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. The council's next regularly scheduled meeting is on next Monday, Monday, February 8th. The council, in their Rules Committee meeting earlier this evening, has decided to start an alternate format for the timing of council meetings. That format will be as follows. At 5:30 PM, as has been in past practice, the Administration and Public Works Committee will meet. At the conclusion of that meeting, there will then be a 15-minute recess and 15 minutes after the conclusion of the Administration and Public Works Committee, the council's Planning and Development Committee will meet. That meeting will go on as long as required. And then at the conclusion of that meeting, there'll be a 15-minute break and then the city council's regular meeting will start. So the council's trying to get away from 8:30, regular meeting starts. This should hopefully have the regular meeting starting at a time earlier than 8:30, but it will not be a fixed time. The council agreed that no council meeting would start earlier than 7 o'clock. We anticipate next Monday evening being short committee meetings, so the regular meeting would start likely sometime between 7 and 8. We will make this known through all the various electronic means that we have, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so that people are aware of that. We hope and anticipate that the city council will take final action on the fiscal year 2010-2011 budget at next Monday's meeting. So I want to make you aware of that. In addition to that meeting next Monday, there is also a special meeting later this week on Wednesday, February 3rd, and that will be here in the council chambers beginning at 6 PM.
Well, I am delighted that you all are here. The huge number of speakers does mean we're going to have to limit the time and I apologize for that, but we are delighted that there are so many of you here. During public comments, if someone has said what you are about to say, you could just say that you agree with the previous speaker and not feel a need to reiterate what has already been said. And that makes things go much, much more smoothly. So please, if someone has already spoken and made your points, say that you agree with them and know that that will be heard. I am going to call four or five speakers at a time. If you go over there and line up, then as soon as the one speaker is done, the next one can move up to the microphone and speak. The first four, five speakers are Gunner Forrest, Dorance Halverson, Carolyn Murray, Patricia Krieg, Charlotte Abern. Abern, thank you very much. Please give your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Gunner Forrest and I live on Florence Avenue in Evanston. I will be 79 years old in 11 days, which clearly qualifies me as a senior citizen. I'm a member of the Levy Senior Center and have been since the 90s. I was a member of the subcommittee chaired by Ann Rainey that helped to put this nationally renowned Senior Center together. I'm a member of the Levy Center Advisory Board and a member and vice chairman of the Life Enrichment Board, which raises funds for and distributes them on request to the Levy Senior Center. Now that you know who I am, I want to say a few words about Leslie Wilson, our program director, who has served in this capacity as long as the current-
Excuse me, I've been told that I didn't, wasn't clear enough. Everyone is going to have a minute, so you get-
Well, I won't have much more to say.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to be sure that was clear. You still have plenty of, plenty of seconds left. Go right ahead.
Who has served, a few words about Leslie Wilson, who is program director, has served in this capacity as long as the current Levy Center has been in operation. She is experienced, skilled, and truly understands seniors. She is an excellent program director. She also performs a myriad of other tasks as we already operate with a skeleton-thin staff. Please don't terminate Leslie. Also, our bus is very important to us, especially with our current driver, Connie, who has been doing this for some years now. She's terrific driving, a person who gets along well with the members and extremely helpful. Connie also helps in the center with a myriad of other things besides her driving. This bus is especially important to our people with disabilities and with our legally-blind members. There are people who have little money and no car and this would certainly affect their ability to attend the center. Twice a week, the bus is also used to take Evanston seniors grocery shopping. It also makes a library run. Bad move to eliminate the Levy Senior Center bus. I was, I've said enough. I would like to pass the baton to Derain Halverson, the vice chairman of the Levy Center Advisory Board.
Thank you.
My name is Dorance Halverson. I live at 1131 Ridge Avenue in Evanston. I have a letter here for the city council members. I also have copies of the Levy News, which I would like to pass on to each of you. I'd like to read the letter to you. As members of the Levy Senior Center Advisory Board, we are concerned with the recent proposal that calls for the elimination of the director and the bus program at the Levy Center. The program manager has a solid track record of providing for the needs and interests of our seniors in interesting, innovative, and creative ways. We encourage you to scan the Levy News, which I'm just handing out now, to understand the range of programs, activities, and events which she has developed, implemented, and supervised. She also handles problem resolution, responds to member issues, and at times even prepares meals for the lunch program. She takes care of things that need doing.
We need you to wind it down. Thank you.
Okay. The loss of the program director would significantly diminish the programs, activities, and events of the Levy Senior Center. We appreciate your, the opportunity to provide this input and wish you well in bringing your budget to a satisfactory conclusion.
Thank you.
I'm Patricia Gregg, 2731 Elgin Road, Evanston. I'm a member of the Life Enrichment Committee at the Levy Center. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Tonight, I ask that you seriously reconsider the changes being proposed to eliminate the Levy Senior, the Levy Senior Center bus, as well as to eliminate the program director, Leslie Wilson, who takes into consideration the individual needs of the seniors. Seniors provide stability in the community. Seniors expect to be frugal and thankful. They understand budgets and debt and being cost-conscious about all phases of life. And with this plan in mind, seniors have already modified their living expenses and barely cover costs. Now, people at the center who've developed macular degeneration and other physical ailments can no longer drive and have difficulty navigating the street bus system, walking to grocery stores, to doctors' offices. But Levy provides one real source of the community which they trust and have confidence in and on a daily basis, too. So please reconsider the needs of our seniors so that when other people are retiring, they'll want to stay with us in Evanston instead of selling and moving elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Charlotte Abernell. I've cut out certain things which have already been mentioned. We are supposed to be creating jobs, saving jobs, and yet the city of Evanston is letting good, qualified people go. If you, the city is cutting staff at the Levy Senior Center, as you know, and if we let these people go, the next step is close the center down because without these people, there really is no need for the center. There is no Senior Center without this current staff, all eight of them. We seniors pay our taxes and the only thing we receive from the city is this center. Close it down and we have nothing but our tax dollars will still be taken. This center is a lifesaver for all of us. If you, we are family here. If you hurt one, you hurt all. There are other things that can be done to cut costs. Don't throw away any good people. President Obama's plans are to create jobs, not cut them. Perhaps we need to rethink our present form of government here in Evanston. A city manager form does not truly represent the people. Again, I am pleading with you to save our entire staff. That is the receptionist-
I need you to wrap it up.
Yeah, that is all of them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
My name is Carolyn Murray. I'm with the United States Navy Reserve Forces, live in 1930 grade. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak. However, I'm concerned with the issue of closing down the dental clinic. As a reservist, I rely on the dental clinic. My children have been patients at the dental clinic for several years. Closing down the dental clinic, unlike some of the controversy with the branch libraries, it's not a convenience, it is a necessity. I rely on the clinic to be open and available for my children to have their screenings for their exams for school, as well as the care providers that render for my children while I'm away overseas serving my country. They need the convenience to have dental plans and dental, dental services available close to the proximity of where we live. My also, I have a parking suggestion for the downtown area. Unlike the parking amounts for 75 cents or hourly, most, for the gist of the complaints that I've been getting from people that, of residents that want to go downtown, parking is one of the biggest issues.
I need you to wrap it up. I'm, I'm very sorry.
Okay. What I'm suggesting, that possibly having the residents buy into a monthly parking permit that would allow them use, to, to use the permit in the downtown area, as opposed to being, putting in the quarters and the inconvenience of the coin parking in the street. Also, the residents that live in Evanston that actually work in the downtown area would also be interested in buying into a permit that they can use for their vehicle, register to their vehicle, to, to park in the downtown area. A monthly fee, perhaps limited per month.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Sure.
Next is Ada Khan, Don Baker, Nathaniel Brown, Anthony Arnold, and Rena Ranger. It is my understanding that ECMC speakers have all agreed to waive their time for a video? Not all. Okay. Then there are five names that I have here, Steve, that I, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm Ada Khan. I live at 2562 Wellington Court. I'm a member of the board of the Evanston Community Media Center. We understand the need to cut the budget for many Evanston activities, including our ECMC. You have recommended a cut of $200,000, which other speakers have already talked about and said that it will force the studio to close down. Our executive director, Steve Bartelbaugh, has proposed a compromise situation that you cut our budget by $100,000 instead of $200,000 and that the ECMC relocates to a rent-free site such as the ETHS or City Hall. This could work. Currently, ECMC pays $90,000, $95,000 a year in rent, but we need to give a 12-month notice to break that lease. ECMC is a valuable resource for all of Evanston. Please vote for Mr. Bartelbaugh's proposal and let's keep ECMC alive. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a perfect minute. Thank you.
I'm Don Baker. I live at 1224 Sherman. I'm the executive director of YOU Youth Organizations Umbrella for 38 years, following city budgets for 43 years. And it's clear to me that this is the most difficult year ever and everyone in the community is going to have to do a part. But I want to make the case that the human service agencies that the city supports have been doing their part in keeping and being cut for years. In fact, we have been cut by actual dollars by 23% since 1997 and with the new, which is 50% adjusted for inflation, and with the newest cuts, that will be 41% in dollars, 65% adjusted for inflation. We've been getting cut for a very, very long time. Two, three points, that was one. Number two is, we provide services much less expensively than the city can do it themselves because of a whole variety of reasons. We bring in more dollars through other resources, we use volunteers, our salary levels are lower, et cetera. So it's a very cost-effective way to deliver services, working through the human service agencies. And three, and what's by far the most important, this is an incredibly difficult time for the vulnerable population we serve. 85% of the people who reserve, receive services from the mental health board-funded agencies, they're struggling to stay in the community. They're losing their jobs, they need childcare to be able to function, they need after-school programs-
And I'm sorry, I need you to wrap it up.
For their children to be safe, for this to be a community, for all of us to be able to stay in, we have to continue to support the services that help Evanston stay diverse.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nathaniel Brown and I live at 1613 Madison, right here in Evanston, and I'm a minister at Fay Temple Church of God and Christ. And we should not cut the, the budget in such a severe way at ECMC for two reasons. Primarily, Bishop Moody has a show, Moment with the Bishop, which brings a message of hope and salvation, which is the life, death, and resurrection of Jesus Christ that has changed many people's lives, lives at our church and all around the world. And we, we need not change that. And the second thing is that Alderman Jean Baptiste came to our church and spoke to our youth about reaching out in the community and endeavoring to make a better future for ourselves. And ECMC is one of the outlets that we do this, especially our youth at the church. And we just, I, I suggest that we do not cut the budget such, in such a severe way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Tony Arnold and I live at 617 Case Place and I am a product of the Evanston community. I agree with Minister Nathaniel Brown, representing the voice of those you probably won't see utilizing the Levy Center, the youth of Evanston. I came to Evanston when I was 13. I'm a product of the Fleetwood Jordan Community Center, family-focused. I am now a 33-year-old, tax-paying citizen in Evanston. And if you would like to do something for at-risk youth or any other youth who need something to do, the ECMC is a perfect place. Great education, they can have something to do, keep it open, don't cut the budget.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rena Ranger. I live at 378 North Overlook Trail in Round Lake. I was an Evanston resident for 17 years and I still have a home here. I recognize that you will have to make some major decisions regarding money. However, we cannot allow money to surpass the essential things of life, which are our children. ECMC is an outreach center for the young, the not-so-young, the seniors, and it is open to every ethnic group. It's a place where the young has been given the opportunity to receive training on technology that they would not otherwise receive. It's a self-development center for anyone who is interested in developing their creative skills. I believe that ECMC is too essential not to support because it supports our children. It keeps them off the street, out of the gang, teach them to be productive rather than destructive. Help them develop the skills that create a win-win situation for them and us, the community.
I, I need you to wrap it up. Thank you.
Okay. The ECMC should be a landmark for the community and we should be glad to provide the monies needed. Thank you.
Next will be George Vale, Robert S. Bulmer, who lives on Brummel. I'm sorry if I mispronounced the name. George Mitchell, Jackie Davidoff, and Jeannie Sankey.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. Manager Bob Kowits. I have a information packet if you could pass it down. My name is George Vale. I work in fleet service and I am a union member here to discuss the fleet personnel cuts. During the last, during the recent budget hearings, comments were made regarding the maintenance of city vehicles, but not the maintenance of the fleet. We have currently over 100 vehicles that are older than the expected APWA life cycle. If you look through your packet, you will find more details on this. Based on the age of the fleet, this reduction would seriously undermine the ability of most public works and emergency services to perform their duties. Excuse me. Due to this, please ask the following questions. When the economy recovers, is the city willing to infuse several million dollars into the fleet fund? What are the impacts of these cuts over the next several years? What will the impacts and potential costs of the fleet cuts to city services as a whole? What are the short and long-term benefits of these cuts to the city? Will these cuts truly save operating dollars or are we merely tripping over nickels or dollars to save nickels? If the city eliminates the three positions, the service savings will be in the thousands, but the real cost shared across the city in terms of money, service levels-
I need you to wrap it up, please.
Have yet to be determined. Thank you, Madam Mayor. But could exceed the accepted savings. For these reasons, it would be unwise to proceed with any of the cuts in our department. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm George Mitchell, president of the Evanston North Shore Branch within the ACP, 1229 Emerson Street. I rise this evening to add comment to the issues surrounding the city's budget shortfall. The perception often is that those who don't complain or are limited in sophistication and ability to claim, to, to complain, get the short end of the stick. The perception is that city services has an air of elitism in that cuts and services come at the expense of those least able to complain or those least affluent. A couple of examples. Cutting garbage collection positions costs the jobs of many who live in Evanston and buy products in Evanston and, yes, pay taxes in Evanston. This seems like a spiraling pit which separates those who are affluent from those who are not. It amplifies the problems of working people and poorer people in Evanston. I know that contracting can offer enticing savings initially, but at a potential for later cost increases. This, to me, is a short-term gain for a long-term pain. Eliminating the dental health services program affects children from our poorer families. My understanding is that the direct cost to the city for these services has been between $90,000 and $153,000 for the last five years. That's not a lot of money, nor does it make a significant impact on the deficit. Why eliminate this service that benefits our future tax-paying citizens? It seems like a small price to pay for the health services to approximately 1,500 children. It is, it is hard enough for low-income people to live in Evanston. Why make it tougher? I know this has been a struggle for those planning and eventually deciding to, and eventually making the decisions on expenses versus revenue. However, I want all to keep in mind that the city serves all its citizens and has an obligation to make tough decisions which make sense and minimize suffering of those least able to resist.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jackie Davidoff at 816 North Monticello and I'm here to speak on behalf of the dental clinic. I have no relation to the clinic or no vested interest other than I'm a mom and I have kids and I'm concerned about speaking for people that might not be here tonight. Specifically, you guys know pretty much the facts, but, you know, my concern is that the clinic serves people who may not have access to dental care, to kids and to families, and that there's a cost to both our, both our area and also to the families themselves in terms of distress to kids and families and to, you know, their ability to stay in school, to be present in school, and also an economic cost to our city. If we did cut the clinic, it would be a trickle-down effect. There would be increased use of emergency rooms and things like that. So I just, my heart goes out to the families and I want all kids to be able to have access to dental care. It's just very important. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
My name is Robert Bulmer. I live at 1525 Brummel Street. The city manager's revised budget recommendations show that the Ecology Center is off the chopping block. However, as the mayor has said, it's not over till it's over. If the Ecology Center is indeed safe, then I ask the council to put its muscle behind stabilizing the center's future. It's day camp enrollment season. I urge the council to help get the message out clearly that the Ecology Center remains safe, open, and available for day camp enrollment. Highlight it on the first page of your website. Next, I urge the council not only to continue funding the Ecology Center, but to make no cuts in the budget whatsoever. The center runs on a bare-bones staff. They make terrific use of volunteers to keep costs down and involve the public. Please do not reduce their staff by even one person. Finally, I'd like to highlight a unique part of the Ecology Center, their traveling collection of over three dozen exotic animals, a learning opportunity for all who visit the center. My sons are longtime volunteers at the center, helping to take care of these animals. The collection includes everything from a Cuban tree frog to a hedgehog to a huge Sulcata tortoise named Bernie. Sulcata tortoises live up to 80 years. I'd like to make eight-year-old Bernie the poster child of our cause. Evanston citizens want this Ecology Center to outlive Bernie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeannie Zonka. And Madam Mayor, if it's easier to remember Larry Zonka of the Miami Dolphins, that's as close as anybody gets.
Thank you. That doesn't help me particularly, but thanks for trying.
Ann can coach you. I'm going to truncate my remarks due to the time limits. I will email the council my entire prepared remarks, but just to summarize very quickly. It's been suggested that public access's use is past and it's been supplanted by social media and the internet. Honestly, that's like saying that Skype has rendered all telephones obsolete. These are not competing media, they are complementary media, and the media center is very good at using those complements to full advantage. I point this out because public access is at risk. We understand you're under severe pressure to cut this budget and we understand what it means to hold to a budget, as you have all seen from what we have sent you. We are still prepared to stand by our offer of $100,000 in reserve when we can move, but that will not be for 22 months. Meanwhile, I would like to point out very quickly that if you think that public can be replaced by YouTube, I would suggest you talk to the following individuals. The Women in Cancer Program run by Nancy Floyd at the Hartwood Center. Evanston Pennies for Peace. The Evanston Rogers Park Chapter of Amnesty International. The Evanston Symphony Orchestra. Piccolo Theater. The Magua YMCA. Most of these programs have benefited because somebody saw them talking to me on TV. They would not have been found on YouTube. Others have enjoyed our, our production services, which allows them to get useful media product at very low affordable cost for nonprofits. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Jordan Lur from Grayslake, Gennaro Jackson, Karen Terry, and Marcia Schlomer.
Hi, I'm Marcia Schlomer and I live at 1304 Kirk. My story began when I was 38 years old and I lived in the suburbs and thought I had it all. My sister died from a bipolar dis- My sister died from a bipolar disorder. She committed suicide, and I was left alone with an 11-year-old son. I had my first psychotic episode two years later and began drinking and threw out my medication and ended up numerous times at institutions. The last time that I was at Reed, a case manager, a social worker, came up to me and said, "Marcia, where will you live?" And I said, "I'm homeless." And he said, "I'm going to refer you to Northwestern Memorial Hospital's Emergency Housing Program." There I went with the clothes on my back, spent one year there, and then was referred to Housing Options. I have been with Housing Options for the last 17 years and has literally transformed my life. I have been able to meet my potential as an independent woman and volunteer in numerous activities in Evanston. The proposed budget cuts affects people with mental illnesses like myself, who desperately need housing and services to reach their own potential. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[653.88][653.88](APPLAUSE).
My name is Jordan Luer. I reside at 156 South Allegheny in Grayslake. I am the executive director of the North Shore Senior Center, which has offices here in Evanston at 840 Dodge. I am here on behalf of Human Services Funding. As you are aware, the mission of the North Shore Senior Center is to help seniors remain independent and healthy. This means providing them services that kept, keep them from moving out of their homes and into more restrictive and more costly settings. We provide our services at a cost per client of $223 per year. Without our services, these seniors would be forced to move into assisted living or nursing homes. The cost to move into a nursing home is at the low end, $50,000 per year per client. Your investment in the seniors of Evanston is and would be a wise investment relative to the financial impact without these services. Thank you.
Thank you.[721.88][721.88](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, council. My name is Gennaro Jackson. I represent Fleet Services. Currently, there are two positions proposed to be cut out of Fleet Services: Mechanic Three and Auto Service Worker. As we continue to service an aging fleet of over 300, this poses an even greater strain on a department that is already low on manpower. The Auto Service Worker shares responsibility in keeping a fleet of nearly 70 police cars in service. Under the proposed budget, you would have sworn officers transporting cars for maintenance instead of being on patrol. And by doing this, the maintenance of the cars would drop by 50%. Currently, the police vehicles are the most main, well-maintained fleet in the city. I feel this is an internal service that should not be compromised: One, for the safety of our officers, and two, for the safety of our citizens. With no replacements on vehicles, every mechanic in Fleet Services will be responsible for the service of 29.5 vehicles, including the Auto Service Worker. I pose this question to council: Are we prepared to compromise where all the city's services begin? Thank you.
Thank you.[810.85][810.85](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. I'm Karen Terry. I live at 1114 Judson Avenue, and I'm president of the Board of Trustees for the library. I'm here as, in that role. I'm also here as a member of the Task Force for Sustainable Funding of the Evanston Public Library. As you know, last month, the board passed a resolution advocating for the continued maintenance and operation of the branches and recognition of their value. In order to make good on that, we've also voted to form a task force to explore every possible option for sustainable funding of library services. We're trying not to waste a good crisis, and we want to bring some fresh thinking to this. So tonight, I just want to tell you about the task force, what we've done so far, and the direction that we're taking. We have met. We are forming. We are picking our members. I'm going to be on it. We have another representative from the library board that's going to be on it. They will be reporting, we will be reporting to the library board. We will have representatives of the branch advocates, but we also intend to have representatives from every community in Evanston so that this is really a representative task force. We want to take an exhaustive look at funding options for the library because we know that this has been a bone of contention for over 30 years. Subcommittee's are being formed. We know we have to cover a lot of ground quickly. We're going to be looking at fundraising from public, private, and corporate sponsorship sources. We have a task force that would be looking at improving branches and facilities, I'm sorry, improving service and facilities at both branches, north and south. We are going to look at how we could possibly open a branch resource center on the west side. We're going to look at every kind of alternative and non-traditional option for delivering library services across Evanston. We want to bring in more volunteers and have public outreach, and we also want to turn over every possible governance rock to make sure that we've got the best possible model for running the libraries that there is.
I do need you to wrap up. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's good news, so I'm happy to hear it.
Good. We're just going to work as quickly as we can. We'll be quick as bunnies. We can't get it all done in the next couple of weeks. We need a little time and a little funding to keep the lights on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[943.43][943.43](APPLAUSE). Next will be Nicholas Blandic, Althea Gregory, Steve Murray, Ed Julian, and Dick Peach.
Nick Blandic, 2756 Garrison. I'm here to suggest that you consider a, a study that would require a risk reliability assessment. I sent two mails, emails to my alderman, and I think I have a witness that can corroborate these things. In the, in the one winter when there was a considerable amount of snow on the ground, one of our neighbors volunteered to ask to our, or asked us to volunteer to park on one side of the street, and this was to facilitate emergency vehicles. We, there, then I went to the city hall, got a set of drawings, and looked at what the rules were. There were none. So we were able to develop a set of rules that were then to become the guidelines for municipality. They were adopted in, to, coming, cutting this down to a minute, I can ask the former alderman of the Seventh Board to-
No special favors. Sorry, Nick.[1033.63][1033.63](LAUGHING).
Well, anyway, it took three years to get this. So we, I polled all our neighbors, developed a, a chart and made a matrix, and then set up what the guidelines would be. And this is, then we went to the Administration and Public Works Committee chaired by the dean of the council, Ann Rainey. And this is where we have our current standards. I think you should implement it not only here, but elsewhere. All I've heard so far tonight were areas in which people want you to extend more and more funds. I want to remind you of something that some scientists tell us.
Need you to wrap it up.
Right, this, just with this end.
Okay.
The children born today are going to live to the age 100. Half of the children born today are expected to reach age 100. I think you know what you have to do.
Good evening. My name is Althea Laverne Gregory. My address is 435 Dewey. I am here to represent Fay Temple Church, where the pastor is Bishop Carlos Moody, and to support the ECMC. I think that the ECMC has helped Fay Temple and other churches reach and support and, minister to our community. The ECMC also has helped many young people learn the arts of the media industry, along with giving them a place to go to develop their arts. Speaking as a, as an Evanston resident, our community, our community would be greatly miss, missing the community media. It would be greatly missed. So we ask that you truly evaluate a way or ways that you may include the ECMC into this city budget, and we thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Steve Murray. I'm a certified, certified arborist for the forestry department. For years, I've helped to maintain and care for Evanston's trees. I would like to take this opportunity to ask you to reconsider the proposed cuts to our department. Evanston is a community that truly loves their trees. This is evident by the past commitment to maintaining our Parkway trees, which has earned a city, tree-city distinction for over 27 consecutive years. Our department was expanded slightly over the past 10 years to lessen the time required to trim the trees. The unexpected infestation of our ash trees by the Emerald Ash Bor has been a setback for our trimming schedule. Fortunately, we do have an adequate staff to deal with the bor infestation. This infestation has already infested over 2,000 public and private trees. This is affecting every area within Evanston and will continue to be a major part of our job. We cannot predict the amount of additional infestations, which unfortunately are a real problem that we will have to battle for years to come. Besides dealing with the ash war, we trim hazard trees, remove dead, dying, and diseased trees, scout and inspect these trees, and we also recycle wood waste through firewood sales, which generated over $20,000 in 2009. We also offer free wood chips for the residents and plant hundreds of new trees yearly. Forestry employees are on call after hours to deal with any tree failures from limbs to entire trees. We take pride in the work that we do, and we are dedicated to the trees and their care. Given the amount of trees and their value to the community, I feel it is in the city's best interests not to eliminate the forestry positions, positions at this time. Thank you very much.
My name is Edgar Julian, and I am one of the city buildings inspectors and among those whose positions are proposed to be eliminated. I came here to bring to the attention of the honorable council that despite the economic crisis the country is facing, the Community Development Department in particular can easily surpass the revenue it projected for this year. We can raise the building permit revenue without raising the fees, and we can recover the lost revenues from the previous years. I prepared a two-page speech, but that's not going to happen. Let's just read, you know, the important part. We lost several millions from previous years and stands to lose hundreds of thousands this years. This year, things are not corrected, and here is why: The Evanston fee ordinance is flawed. The ordinance is too, I'm sorry to say this, contractor-friendly. The ordinance provides that, and I hope the director of Community Development will accept and estimate furnished to him by the applicant for the permit at the time of the application. This provision basically tells the applicant, okay, pay as you wish. They can dictate how much they want to pay. This provision has seriously impacted the building permit revenues in terms of permit fees paid based upon the construction cost estimates provided by them by as much as 70% for residential projects-
Mr. Julian, I do need you to wrap it up. I apologize.
Well, one more thing. I can prove this, that if we do something about this, we can raise the, the building permit revenue by as much as $450,000 for every million of the projected revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't you leave the letter with me, and I'll make sure that each council member gets a copy.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dick Peach. I live at 1414 Greenleaf. It's my pleasure tonight to speak on behalf of the Evanston Environmental Association's Board, Board of Directors. We are very pleased to find out that the council has seemed to alleviate us from the cuts, at least at the moment. We'd like to thank you for that and for your vision and how much we do provide for the city. We look forward to continuing our operation and our collaboration with the city. We intend to look at collaborative efforts for continuing the fundraising, which we have done for the last 36 years in building the Ecology Center. We built the original building. We raised the funds for the addition, the $800,000 to build the new addition and the great room there. And we look forward to all the programs we provide to the city as being a, a very big positive grant for all nine wards, and we look forward to continue getting the future. For the city manager, in the last week, we collected over 400 signatures on, on a petition just to find out what the public support was for us, but we'll give you a copy of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1444.27][1444.27](APPLAUSE). The next speakers will be Marcia Mahoney, Vani Moore, 827 Seward, Rosalie Ziamac, and
Good evening. My name is Marcia Mahoney. I live at 1236 Forest Avenue. I am a staff member at the South Branch of the Evanston Library, but I'm here as a citizen and a member of the Branch Love Steering Committee. I'm the only person from the Steering Committee who will be speaking this evening. There are six people that are signed up. They will defer to me. I should only take though maybe two and a half minutes.
Thank you.
Yes. I'd like to do two things. First, I'd like to tell you what we've been up to in the last week, and second, I'd like to address the issue of the suggested closure of the main library for one day a week. First, our accomplishments. We've been working hard. You've asked citizens this year to step up and volunteer their time, and we've been doing that. This week, we've been focusing on the question of whether or not sustainable funding for neighborhood libraries is possible, and we've been doing a preliminary assessment of that as we're making a commitment of our own personal time to make this happen. And what we found is the answer is yes. And here's what we've done. We've met with the chair of the library board to discuss the task force. Karen Terry is here, and she's already spoken. We've explored the legality of resuscitating the Friends of the Library group, which is the fundraising arm into which fundraised dollars will go. We've identified fundraising resources, both individual and institutional. There is a petition online that folks have signed to save trees. We did not make multiple copies. There is one copy of the comments I'm handing to Alderman Fisk, and we've begun to contact those folks and gauge the depth of their commitment, both financially and their willingness to volunteer. We've spoken amongst ourselves and identified our own contacts, begun to aggregate those, our experiences, fundraising in schools, charities, and political campaigns. On the institutional side, we've begun to identify foundations that are interested in investing in library computing centers and in innovative methods for delivering library services. Anecdotally, today, I visited the Oak Park Library and its branches, and there, I met with their branch manager, and she told me about the state money that paid for the renovation of their branches, the Gates Grant that they just received to buy seven laptops for one of their branches because it is physically a small place and standalone computers won't fit, and so they received a grant for laptops. They also just received a landscaping grant for the other branch to make the entryway more attractive. We believe that there's foundation money that can help Evanston. Currently, there's no one in the library staff to pursue that. That job has been cut, but we believe that our task force, through our volunteer efforts, can help. We have visited Family Focus, Fleetwood Jordaine, Chandler Newberger, Robert Crown, and the Levy Center to determine whether or not library services could be delivered there. We've met with the manager of Boku Cafe at Church and Dodge and discussed with him the challenges and opportunities of having a computing center in that neighborhood. We've spoke with Deenia Hester, the former West Branch librarian, and took her materials about the opening and the closure of the West Branch that we got from the Evanston Historical Society and had a wonderful conversation with her. We've visited the Skokie Bookmobile to eyeball their delivery system, and as mentioned, we visited the Oak Park Libraries, where they have a main library in two branches, as we do in Evanston. We see that there are real opportunities, and we believe that if you give us a year, we can affect change. Moving now to the question of the main library and whether it should close for one day a week to provide funds for the branches and to give the task force time to raise money. I'm a librarian. I love libraries. If I were in your shoes, I'd find a place to scrimp somewhere else, as would my colleagues in the Branch Love Group. The idea that the city closed the main library for one day a week did not come from us, and we'd give up something else to keep it open. You've asked for suggestions. I'm not a budget analyst, but it looks like the budget for planting new trees next year is $360,000. If you just planted half as many trees, you could leave the main library open seven days a week. Ultimately, whatever you choose, we will work our very hardest to ensure that the end product is worth it. It's time that Evanston had a plan to deliver library services to all parts of the city and that it mined every possible funding source to make that happen. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Vani Moore, Vice President, Historical Unit, Local 1891. I'm a little nervous, first time did this. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the sanitation department. In your packet, you have some information about the recycling center. I first have a question. If recycling is the way to go, then why do we entertain the thought to- the thought to close the recycling center? We did a survey for the recycling center that stated that the majority of the residents, I mean, the majority of the people that use the recycling center were non-residents. I would like to think that that's a source of income. If we come up with ways to charge for the recycling, and the more recycling that they bring in, that's better for us, if recycling is the way to go. Sanitation. I've been with the City of Evanston for 10 years, two as a temp, eight as a full-time employee. And in that 10-year tenure, I've watched the sanitation department be cut in half. We work for the City of Evanston. We follow your instructions. We do our jobs with pride. We do our jobs with integrity, and we do it well. Any more proposed cuts would hinder those services. I don't believe that there's an entity out there that can do it better and more efficient than the employees that you have working for you now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Rosalie Ziamac. I live at 2149 Hartree, and I don't have a statement. I just wanted to say that I'm here in support of the branch libraries, and also wanted to make the suggestion that one way to save a little money might be to turn down the heat in this room. Thank you.
My name is Sue Robert. I live at 2627 Central Street in Evanston. I'm a member of the Levy Senior Center, and I'm a member of the Life Enrichment Fund Board of the Levy Senior Center. The Levy Senior Center has a paid Evanston membership of well over 1,000. These are residents aged 55 to 95-plus. The center is open Monday through Friday from 7:00 in the morning to 5:00 in the afternoon for senior programming only. I left at home a list of 88 categories of activities which the center offers to its members now. It's a busy, happy, productive place where seniors gather. The Senior Center offers all this with very small staff. We have one part-time director, Christina Ferraro, whom we share with the Ecology Center. We have one Activities Director, Leslie Wilson. There are a few other part-time staffers. Leslie Wilson has been Program Coordinator at the Levy Center for 20 years. Even though the center itself has moved several times, she has stayed with us. She has 20 years of experience working with our seniors, finding out what's wanted and what's not wanted, what works and what doesn't work.
I apologize to you and to everyone, but we do need to keep comments down to a minute. We will have done 30 speakers in an hour, by my reckoning.
I understand. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But with her experience and her expertise, her knowledge of the Senior Center, it's going, she's irreplaceable, really, and we hate to lose her and the bus.
Thank you very much. Next, could we have Michael Collins, Brad Weiss, Mike Fasilco, Michael Tannen, and Lori Keenan. Who are the people who are not speaking because the library's speech went on? Okay, Lori, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. I'm Michael Corey Collins. I was born in Baltimore, Maryland. I came, moved here to Evanston in 1983. I'm a product of Evanston Township High School. I graduated in 1993. I am also a product of Faith Temple Church of God in Christ, where Bishop Moody is my pastor. I'll make this quick. When I graduated in 93, I was once a concern to my mother, my father as well, because I was a troubled teen. I was smoking weed, smoking cigarettes, drinking, partying, and all the whole nine. I recently gave my life to the Lord, so I'm here representing ECMC, because our youth of today, I'm sure you all know that they need a difference. So, a lot of you all, I'm sure, all you who go to church, you will see that some come to church and some actually stay home. So, for those who stay home, I'm sure that sometime they get an opportunity to see my bishop and my pastor on the cable channel. So, and if all you parents right here now, if you went home right this second, your children would be doing one of three things: either not home, or in front of the TV, or in front of the TV doing their homework. So, would you rather have your children on, watching TV, watching some rap video, or some rock video where they're just doing something that's totally crazy, that's against what your morals are and what you would teach your children to do, or would you rather have them watching something very positive, something that's a part of ECMC? Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Weiss. I live at 2731 Thayer Street in Evanston. Been an Evanston resident for 10 years. I've been a dentist for 11 years. Practice in downtown Evanston. It's the first time I've spoken to this group. It's the first time I've contacted an alderman. The Dental Center is a critical part of what makes Evanston work. As part of the North Suburban Branch of the Chicago Dental Society's Executive Board and the American Dental Association, one of our biggest problems is access to care. Oral health is, cannot be separated from overall health. One thing that the Dental Center does is keep Evanston's kids healthier, and there is no substitute for that. I don't know the dental, I have no affiliation with the dental clinic. I don't know the dentist that works there, and I do know the numbers, and it's an incredible value to our population, and we should do everything in our power to keep this clinic alive and well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike Fasilco, 2728 Reese Avenue, Evanston. Evanston has a higher property tax rate than all other North Shore communities, including Winnetka, Willmet, Kennelworth, and Skokie. At the last budget meeting, Council asked for a summary of what the average property tax levy would be to cover each million dollars of budget deficit. We were told that the whole premise of this year's budget discussions and all of the carefully orchestrated workshops was that the budget would be solved without another tax levy increase. The new Council was swept into office largely because citizens no longer trusted their previous representatives and because of the ever-increasing property tax burden. This Council needs to look beyond February 2010, beyond 2011, and as far into the future as possible, putting in place the means of generating revenue that is not the result of property tax increases. Take bold action so that, once and for all, there's an equilibrium of tax distribution in Evanston. There are at least three alternative revenue-generating initiatives that the Council could turn to. First, there's been much talk of extending water supply lines to the western communities that Evanston could profit from. Second, I've been advocating an aggressive look at making Evanston a point of destination for visitors from around the country.
I do need you to wrap it up, please.
Okay. And third, there's a $6 billion gorilla in the room that has not paid its fair share of city expenses or contributed to the Police and Firemen's Pension Fund for at least 150 years or so. Northwestern University, refusal to pay for city services they use, and the budget deficit. There's a direct connection between these two, and it's forcing us to close libraries and cause reduction of the police and firemen's services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jonathan Perman, Daniel Kuzinski, Steve Bartelbaum.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Jonathan Perman. I'm the Executive Director of the Evanston Chamber of Commerce. We have 600 member companies here in Evanston. Today, the Evanston Chamber of Commerce endorses the basic principles of the proposed City of Evanston budget. As business owners, we understand firsthand the difficult financial decisions that confront the City Council. We've had to make some of those same types of decisions in the last year. We commend the City Council for directing the city manager to address the structural deficit facing Evanston. The commitment by the City Council to make tough decisions both this year and in the next several years is laudable and deserving of respect and support. And furthermore, the Chamber is impressed with the City Council making these decisions consistent with the 12 goals the City Council outlined last year and in the city's strategic plan. In the past years, proposals for cuts in services have met with vocal resistance that generated great debate on issues, though rarely shedding light on appropriate alternatives. What's different about this year's budget is the economic context in which Evanston and other local governments find themselves. No longer can Evanston rely on the natural growth in sales and property tax revenues that it once could. No longer can it delay its responsibilities to its pension obligations, nor can it account on the state of Illinois.
Jonathan, I need you to wrap it up. We do have the letter. Thank you.
And finally, let me just say that a city budget that does not rely on higher fees and taxes on commercial enterprises is a very sensible policy for the city. The Chamber is supportive of how the budget priorities address the recession's impact and provide a renewed focus on economic development and on job creation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Daniel Kuzinski. I worked for Public Works for the past 21 years. I've seen a lot of cuts in this town. I've seen a lot of things go good, a lot of things go bad. I, right now, have seen these cuts that are coming for, or proposed cuts, for fleet services, for forestry, libraries, parks, all over. There are some things that have worked in the city, some things that haven't. One of the things that hasn't is proposed change of fleet services. They've done a shift change back 13, 15 years ago to the shift that you're proposing now. It didn't work then. The work didn't get done. They had to change back to the way it is now. There's numerous people here that are, people sitting next to you that are proposed, with their jobs being lost. If those people stand up with those jobs that are being proposed to be cut, these are all people all around here. We don't need to lose any more people. We have tried, as a union, to help the city with making cuts and saving money. We've changed shifts and to cut back on overtime. So, please, let's try not cutting any of the services here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Steve Bartelbaum, the Executive Director of the Evanston Media Center. I hope Council has taken the time to look at the ECMC finances since the last meeting. We sent a copy of our most recent audit to you, and it should be clear that the $500,000-plus number included monies that were restricted for equipment purchase and net book value of current equipment that is owned. Basically, we have restricted monies that were approved by the city for future equipment purchases. The idea was to not spend foolishly, knowing that a costly digital transition would take more than the normal yearly allotment. We started to make those purchases but have stopped due to the possibility we may relocate. Now, not everyone here has probably been to ECMC, so I thought I'd give you a quick idea of what was happening at our facility today. We had four field cameras checked out over the weekend and one laptop that were scheduled for return. I had a visit from the El Crow Village Government Access Coordinator to see our facility. Two people renewed membership. One staffer was editing an MLK Day shoot from Walker School. Hey, you know, one volunteer was editing an independent project. The members from EvanstonOnline.com came in to produce a live-streaming newscast. A board member came in to revise our plan for new revenues. Our engineer and I met with two gentlemen who are looking to help us at ComEd Bills with grant money. Tonight, one of our employees is directing this meeting live. And did you know that one of our part-timers is covering the District 65 meeting? That's also going on live right now. Our Ops Manager is teaching a free introduction class to potential new members, and the question is, do you think this organization has gained the city's support?
Thank you. Next, we have Cecilia Ungary, Jeffrey Zick, Marsha Akenbach, Erin McCall, Chris Sato, and Junad Rizki. You don't want to know.
Do you want us to come in that order, or does it matter?
Any order. Just step right up, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Alderman and Madam Mayor. I'm Marsha Akenbach. I'm the Chair of the Mental Health Board, and I live at 711 Roslyn. I want to thank you for reading the two memos we sent you in response to your questions. I would like to give one example out of several examples of what will be lost if the Mental Health Board funds are cut by 24%. Child Care Network of Evanston Learning Together program was a result of the Mental Health Board recognizing and responding to a need the early childhood community was facing. Many children were exhibiting behavior that included physical aggression and were a danger to themselves and others. Centers with few resources were forced to expel these children, which put their parents' employment at risk and reduced quality childcare options for the children. This innovative program made it possible for many mental health professionals to intervene with these at-risk children and their parents at the site of the childcare centers. A 24% cut in funding means that the agency would not be able to serve 40 of the 110 families in the Learning Together program. I refer you to the memo we sent you for additional examples of what will be lost if the Mental Health Board funds are cut 24%. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for being here and your comments. My name is Cecilia Ungary. I'm a resident at 530 Sheridan Road here in Evanston, and I wanted to speak on behalf of the Evanston Ecology Center, which we've heard some great news that some of the budget requests are being sort of honored in a way, but I still wanted to speak as both a resident who takes classes and programs at the Evanston Ecology Center and has really valued and benefited from those programs. But I also speak to you from behalf of two small businesses, one Healthy Green Goods, based here in Evanston, and the Green Mama, who's based in Chicago. Both have run programs at the Evanston Ecology Center, so I feel uniquely positioned just to speak out about the incredible value to residents and to the surrounding area for the gem of the actual location, and then all of the incredible education programs that take place there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Mayor, Aldermans, and city manager. My name's Alman McCall, and I'm here to speak on behalf of ECMC. I know that I have a very limited time, so I will try to make it short. Firstly, I just want to say that I agree with what a lot of the young people have been coming forth saying, that they need this education with technology and how it helps them. I agree with everything they said, and I think it's a very important facility to keep open as one contained facility, to help the youth, to help seniors, anyone that wants to learn technology, and technology that is very, very, very difficult to have access to. I want to stress that. Another thing that Steve said was that not a lot of people have been to ECMC. I just want to say that ECMC has a great potential that has not yet been fulfilled. We need a community outreach to inform people that you guys have a cutting-edge, excuse me, you have a cutting-edge, very high-tech facility. It beats Skokie. It beats Chicago miles around. I'm serious. This thing, it's amazing what they have over there.
Thank you. I need you to wrap up.
Okay. I'm going to wrap up and get to the point I really want to talk about, which is generating revenue. I don't think I've heard anyone talk about generating revenue yet, but I believe that ECMC has the ability to help this town generate revenue by doing videos similar to the one, which I believe will be shown later in this program, promoting Evanston businesses. You can create links.
We really need you to wrap it up.
Okay. Lastly, I would just want to say that if you watch this film, just imagine. Any idea that you have can be created like this, promoting Evanston online. You can use that as a tool to attract business to this town. I think ECMC...
Please, we do need you to stop.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
It's a gem that everybody should use.
My name is Chris Sato. I live at 1820 Asbury, just down the street from Hecky's. Sorry, I'm normally used to being behind the camera, because my voice cracks like a 13-year-old girl. You know why. I guess you could kind of say I'm an ECMC success story. Right now, I work as a professional editor in downtown Chicago, and I owe a lot of that to my experiences at ECMC, both as a teacher and as a member. I've benefited a lot from them. As a member, they provided me with equipment and services that I could never afford, and a lot of the projects I finished right after college that led me to get my job were because of ECMC, and so I really want to thank them for that. Also, as a teacher, I taught at Noy's Cultural Arts Center over the summer, and they frequently use ECMC to do a video with all the kids at the end of each session, and any parent that has sent their kids there, I'm sure they'd say that that's the hotspot of the whole summer. And it'd be irreplaceable. And it'd be irreplaceable if that was gone. So, and kind of in closing, just want, you know, the value that there is at ECMC, and it's, I think it's valuable because it not only promotes itself and helps youth, but it also promotes every other organization in here. Every place could have an access to that. So, I don't think we need greener streets. I don't think we need more condos. I just think we need to hold on to the resources that we have. So, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Junad Rizki, this budget really probably is almost over. I'm going to talk about really the next budget cycle. With the economy not likely to improve and even holding salaries of employees at zero, you might not fix the structural, you'll probably fix the structural problems, but maybe not the economic effect. I really think next year, you're going to have to start this much sooner, and you're also going to have to involve the employees maybe a little differently as to what the impacts of service are, because I've been left with some confusion really as to what some of these service cuts might mean. But then again, if everybody, if your employee group comes up here and says nothing can be cut, that doesn't work either. And as you know, really, you're going to have to do something. But the other thing that I'm going to leave it, when are we going to discuss the capital? Because I've heard you have problems with that. That's part of the budget, and it needs to be discussed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Ernst, and then it may be May Russiell, who wants to talk about the library, Trish Steiglitz, Mary Larson, and Barbara Levin.
I'll try to read fast, but not as fast as Steve. Good evening. My name is Chris Ernst, and I live at 1639 Hinman Avenue in Evanston. My purpose in coming here tonight is to add my support to the cuts in the initial budget recommended by the city manager. With few exceptions, I feel that you've been presented with a budget that is fair and realistic. I believe that a major contributor to the financial mess we're currently facing is that we have a history of spending on nonessential items with money we do not have. As a taxpayer, I expect the city to provide essential services. By essential, I refer to maintaining the public infrastructure, roads, sewer, parks, et cetera, sanitation services, high level of public safety, police and fire, keeping streets plowed and cleaned, and a handful of other items. I expect my taxes to support these costs and essential services, and I expect all services to benefit the majority of residents. Everything else falls into the want category. If given enough time, you would undoubtedly hear from every person in Evanston who wants you to support a nonessential service. While the majority of nonessential services are worthwhile, we cannot afford to keep spending money we don't have. Faced with a $9.5 million budget shortfall, I feel the fiscally responsible thing to do is to cut spending on all nonessential items. This will mean ECMC will have to find ways to reduce spending and raise money. Mental Health Board will have to find, be more selective in distributing taxpayer funds.
Chris, I need you to wrap it up.
One more sentence, I hope. And the branch libraries may need to close.
Thank you.
Can I, one more sentence here. Really, as you make adjustments, I approve, I would ask you to consider the following questions. Is the service provided essential to life in Evanston? Is the service a responsibility of the city to provide? And is the city benefiting the majority of, or all residents?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Barbara Levin. I live at 2726 Central Street. I'm a member of the Mental Health Board. I'm a second year. We, as Mental Health Board, contribute to the budget of 17 different agencies. These agencies represent the people in our town who are the most vulnerable, who are least likely to have a voice to speak for themselves. They range from battered women, pregnant teens, children, youngsters on the streets because there are no jobs available for them, senior citizens who are on limited funds, preschool children who are not getting the background that they need and need to be, often need diagnosis to discern problems that parents can't afford to get for them. These are not luxuries, and these are problems that produce even larger problems in the future.
Thank you. We need you to wrap it up, please.
Okay. Fewer homeless on the streets, fewer youngsters in jail, better opportunities for young children. All are benefited from the Mental Health Board. We hope not to be cut.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Larson. I live at 2010 Cleveland Street in southwest Evanston. I'm the Coordinator of Health Services for School District 65 in Evanston. One of my job responsibilities is ensuring that students meet all state mandated health requirements, one of which requires that all kindergarten, second, and sixth graders provide documented proof of having completed a dental exam. I support the previous speakers in regard to their statements championing the Children's Dental Clinic. Our district has worked very closely with this clinic to help promote oral health in our schools, as well as provide direct dental services to our students, especially those from low-income families who would not otherwise have access to dental care. Please know that the services that Children's Dental Clinic provides to our families are as critical as they are priceless. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gary Sherman, Judith Ramey, Sue Holbert, Courtney Price, and Jim Hughes, who I think has waived his time.
Gary has waived his time for ECMC.
Okay, thank you. That's fine.
Thank you. My name is Judith Ramey. I live at 616 Hinman Avenue. I have a personal, but also a general reason for pleading with the council and the city not to cut 24 more, an additional 24 percent from the social service agencies that have already been suffering a great deal from other cuts. I'll read a little bit from a letter I sent earlier to Alderman when. Let me first say to the gentleman in the green shirt, it is, I'm sorry, I don't know your name. I appreciate what you're saying. We have to, we have a huge, these folks have huge decisions to make, but it's not that easy to cut essential from not essential. They meld together. And let me just quote very briefly, 24, from this letter, "24 percent of an already modest budget would be a huge and drastic action affecting a population which cannot in any way afford the kind of disruption that would inevitably occur. Evanston has some fine mental health programs and services, but they are already stressed by decreases in and unreliability of funding caused by Illinois's poor social services record and precarious financial situation, as well as by the current bleak economy. Evanston cannot allow its most vulnerable residents to bear the brunt of its budget crisis when other programs and populations are much better able to withstand the negative effects of budget cuts. We take pride in our city..."
I need you to wrap it up.
"...and what it does for its citizens, and that affects all of us, and it's essential." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Sue Holbert. I live at 400 Main Street in Evanston. Several people in my family have suffered from mental illnesses and other disabilities, and I know how important those things are. And it's not just for the individual, it's for families and communities that we need to do our best for these people. I just want to add to Judith's comments that if we don't take care of these people as best we can and help them as best we can, the problems just multiply and gets more expensive, and people end up in mental health, they end up in psychiatric wards, and they end up in prison, and it costs us a lot more money and a lot more societal grief. So, I think 24 percent is just draconian, and I hope you can improve that a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Courtney Price, and I'd just like to briefly share with you some experiences that I've had with the Evanston Ecology Center and how they forever changed my life. Late spring 1999, I, at 15 years old, came to the Ecology Center, joining some of my peers on the steps of the Civic Center to wait for opportunity for summer employment. And the Summer Youth Program gave me a chance to show Evanston businesses that I was worth investing in. Not knowing what I was really interested in, I looked for inviting personalities and smiling faces, and here I saw people from the Evanston Ecology Center waiting to interview me. Well, my interview went well, and I was notified that I was going to be an assistant camp counselor. And over the next nine years, I was able to work my way through Evanston Ecology Programs and became the director of one of their larger day camps, EcoQuest. And so, through my experiences with them, I was able to be nurtured, I was trained, I was led, and now I am working at Haven as a middle school math teacher. And this is thanks in large part to my success and my training that I was given at the Ecology Center. They allowed me to learn about protecting and conserving my resources in the community as well as in, on the earth. And I just want to be able to give an opportunity to others, to the next generation, to teach them about the things that I've learned and to kind of pay it forward.
Courtney, I apologize. Can you wind it up?
Yes, and investing in the youth. Cutting the budget means that we're cutting leadership out of the community, cutting down community service, and cutting back in the investment in Evanston youth. I would like to continue my family legacy as my late uncle Alan Boat Price did, was such an instrumental pillar in Evanston community. So, save the Evanston Ecology Center, change lives. Thank you for investing in the future.
Thank you, Courtney. The next speakers are Jim Walensky, Gerald Gully, C. Louise Brown, Elizabeth Kinney, and Cecilia Beescat Taff, who's speaking on life safety. And my apologies for mangling the name.
Thank you, Mayor Alderman and City Manager. First, James Walensky, 2242 Lincolnwood Drive in Evanston. First, I want to compliment City Manager Bob Kowitz on his initial proposed budget. I thought it was a valiant professional attempt for an equitable review of all city services to determine how to make up this $9.5 million shortfall. I would question, however, why there were no position eliminations proposed in the enterprise fund areas. But I am here tonight as your former CD Director to discuss position eliminations in the Community Development Department budget. In Mr. Bob Kowitz's proposed budget, he had a zoning officer and electrical inspector position to be cut. I thought these, while certainly not great, were, everyone's got to make a point, so I felt that the CD Department was making a contribution. However, in the latest rounds of cuts, three positions are proposed: a structural inspector position, the assistant director in charge of the building department, as well as the CD executive secretary is being proposed. These cuts I do not understand. Let me address each of these. The structural inspector position, who you heard from tonight, Ed Julian, is a licensed engineer. His job is to make sure that the structures that are being put up in this community are safe. It's just amazing to me that we could talk about, about cutting this critical position. He's the only licensed engineer that's doing any structural inspection for the city of Evanston. Building official, or the assistant director of community development, this is the head of the building department. She is a licensed architect. It's required by code that the building official be a licensed architect. Yeah, you can change the code and put someone else in charge, but are there going to be a licensed architect, and what about the safety issues? Her job is to make sure that all of the building codes in this community are followed, both in plan review and inspections. And finally, the job of the executive secretary to the CD Director, a 20-year employee who all of you know, who was a minute taker and staff to this planning and development committee for over 15 years.
Jim, I need you to wrap it up.
I don't understand how seniority doesn't play, take a place in this community anymore. These cuts all tear the heart out of the building department, and these inspector positions are every bit as important as the public safety positions you have in police and fire. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerald Gully, not an Evanston resident, but I have worked in Evanston for people with developmental disabilities for 40 years. And I'm speaking in behalf of support of the Evanston Mental Health Board. You have one of the most efficient, caring, effective organizations that an organization of any kind could have. And I'm asking you to not consider further reductions. And I say further reductions because if you go back to the mid-'80s, they were 2.3 percent of your city budget. Today, they're 0.7 percent. They have taken a 70 percent reduction, and that's as we have grown in the number of people development, with developmental disabilities and mental illness that have been served by this organization. Every city is made up of people, environment, and services. And within every group of citizens and people, you have a portion that are disabled. These folks, for the most part, never asked for their disability. They were brought into this world. We have a responsibility to help them achieve as much as they can. These organizations help individuals become more independent, satisfying, and productive citizens. Providers are very limited. I heard in a previous meeting...
I do need you to wrap it up, Mr. Gully.
Thank you. Heard in a previous meeting, the city is $1 million short because of the state's delayed in funding. As of December 31, we are 50 percent delayed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is Elizabeth Kinney. I live at 1024 Brummel Street. I've lived in Evanston for over 21 years, and I'm a member of the Evanston Environment Board. I'm here to urge you to fully fund the Ecology Center. I agree with the prior speakers. The center has been an important part of the Evanston community since 1974. Its location and lard, a lard arboretum facilitates the use of its services and provides a multitude of environmental teaching opportunities. In this regard, as you have heard, the center sponsors a wide range of classes and programs. I would highlight just one, Nature Pals, which introduces very young children to nature and the out-of-doors. Each of my three grandchildren, who are also Evanston residents, have loved that program. The center's staff leads canoe trips, highlighting the natural history of the North Shore Channel. The center also sponsors the popular children's fishing program in Lovelace Park, which my grandsons love. It's home to keep Evanston beautiful. It provides meeting space for community groups, such as the Evanston North Shore Bird Club, and is the site of the Evanston Green Living Festival. As Dick Peach noted, the center's building was a gift from the citizens of Evanston to the city. As Evanston residents, have supported measures to preserve our natural resources for a long time. More recently, on March 27, 2006, the Evanston City Council unanimously approved the Evanston Strategic Plan. The plan strives to attain the most effective use of the city's limited resources by focusing those resources on key priorities. In this regard, it provides...
Please wrap it up.
Okay. Evanston is to be known as the green city and will embrace the best ecological practices and policies in our government, services, and infrastructure. I urge you to continue supporting the Evanston Ecology Center. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is C. Louise Brown. I live at 212 Dewey in Evanston and have lived there for over 25 years. I am here to give voice to the nearly 2,000 children who depend upon the dental clinic for services. These children are not the ones whose parents can form large groups of people and come out and speak to these council meetings. The irony is that most of the funding for this clinic is through the I-Kids program, so funding really is not an issue. Please note that history has proven other previous councils' cuts and their desire in health department programs and their desire that other agencies pick up these programs has not materialized. It has not happened. Do your own assessment and see. Those cuts have not happened. Other agencies have not picked them up. So, it really is true that the strength of a person, a nation, a community, or a city council can be told by how it treats its least and its most vulnerable among us. I ask that you seriously consider not eliminating the very last city health service that serves our most vulnerable citizens, the dental clinic. As a former public health director for the city of Evanston, I do speak for public health. Please consider this seriously.
Thank you very much.
Cecilia Beescat Hanchar. I moved to Evanston two years ago. I live on Oak, near Lake. And no matter where I would have moved, I would not use all of the city services, but I chose Evanston because... But I chose Evanston because of those services. I'm here to speak about only one, and that is the Life Safety Service. I am here to ask you to reconsider and not make any changes to the scheduling of the staff. You have wisely invested and upgraded equipment and continue to educate the paramedics and fire service staff. Why would you jeopardize the delivery of those services with an increased timeframe if the staff is rescheduled in any way? Two minutes is critical in a life and death situation, and life services is something everyone uses: infants, seniors. I'm asking you to reconsider that. And lastly, want to compliment the mayor, who, for the first time that I've read, has made inroads to communication and negotiation with Northwestern University. And I am here to ask you to please continue that, hopefully to get a fair share from them for the Life Safety Services that they always have used and continue to use in the way of, "Thanks for the equipment, but let's get some money." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kara Sokal, Louis Glab, Rose Bartlebaum, Art Cohn. Are you all here for the video?
Yeah, I'm going to sign for the short note.
All right, then let's have Kara, and then the video.
I'm Kara Sokal. I live at 1709 Livingston Street. I'm here tonight advocating on behalf of the Evanston High School teen moms and their infants and toddlers, who are served through the childcare and parenting support programs of Teen Baby Nursery. Teen Baby Nursery is partially funded by the Mental Health Board budget and operated by the Infant Welfare Society of Evanston, for which I serve as a board member. Evanston is fortunate to have multiple high-quality early childhood programs serving families of all economic situations, including each of the early childhood programs supported by the Mental Health Board, all of which are vulnerable to severe cuts from the state of Illinois due to the budget crisis. The research is clear. What happens in the first five years of life sets the stage for what will happen in the rest of a child's life. Every dollar invested in high-quality early childhood programs saves $3 to $13 in future public spending, depending on which research study you cite and how long they're counting accruing benefits. In addition to preparing children born to teen moms to succeed in kindergarten and throughout their school career, over 80% of teen baby nursery moms graduate from high school, which is double the national average. Finally, to quote University of Chicago economist and Nobel laureate Dr. James Heckman, who wrote in 2006, "In an era of tight government budgets, the real question is how to use available funds wisely. The best evidence supports a policy prescription: invest in the very young." Thank you.
Thank you. Is ECMC ready to do this video? Or... Either let's turn it on, or I'm going to call some more speakers.
And it costs nothing...
For kids who aren't financially able, I think, and they want to go into this field as an occupation later in their life, I think they have a chance to try this.
My name is Tim Kazarensky. I'm standing here in front of the Evanston Community Media Center. And this may be your last chance to get a look at this place, because I'm horrified to say that it may be shutting down.
Hi, everyone. This is Mike Mitchell. We're getting some opinions regarding the Evanston budget cuts. And one of the facilities that's greatly affected by the budget cuts is the Evanston Community Media Center.
I definitely think it is a place I would love to go into, and having to pay very little money to go into, use this equipment that's there for us.
Yes, it is important, because you never know who wants to use this. And if you just shut it down, then these kids will be left out with nothing, and they might not even be able to get the chance to try this.
Some people are underprivileged, and they wouldn't get the chance to do these things otherwise.
Everybody deserves an opportunity to better themselves and to further education. You know, whether you're richer or poorer, but especially the poor.
It's always important to have, give people the opportunity to learn. So if you shut down that opportunity, I mean, that definitely doesn't help with barriers and people who are looking for a way to move up and try things that they haven't done before.
I was on Saturday Night Live. I did some Police Academy movies. I brought stuff here and edited. I brought my son here. We took the basic courses together. He learned editing, film editing here, and it costs nothing.
For kids who aren't financially able, I think, and they want to go into this field as an occupation later in their life, I think it's great to give them the chance to try this.
If it's anything, like I said, that's going to better the community and better the citizens involved in this community, of course, you know, the city should be behind it.
Just last night, President Obama, in his State of the Union message, could not have stressed more the importance of education and new technologies. And this is what this place represents. It can give any Evanstonian an education. Evanston residents can come and take these classes. They can be a member here for 30 bucks, and they can rent. Rent? You don't have to rent. When you're a member here, you can just come in, borrow the equipment, and go out and make your own movies, make your own shows. It's an astonishing thing.
I think it's very important, because the fact that you can voice your opinion and have it seen by tons of other people who have televisions in their houses is wonderful, because it allows you to not only be heard by your family or your friends, it allows everyone to hear your opinion, which is definitely important.
You send a letter to the editor of the Evanston Review. Yeah, and they're not going to publish it? What are your chances? One in 10? You know, you've got a website, people are going to go hunt it. You come and say something here, it's beamed into houses. We have our own channel here, and you can reach the people.
I think it's very important, man, for the citizens of Evanston to have a voice and a venue to voice their opinions, as far as what goes on in their community. Because without that, your options are limited.
Anything that happens in this town is chronicled by ECMC. Every meeting at City Hall, every important event, when history's being made here, it's being chronicled and catalogued in here. We need this resource.
I think it's kind of contradictory, man, to have these facilities open at one point in time, and then to have them cut just for budgetary reasons. You know, if you guys offer this type of a program and with such affordable prices, I really feel that they should be helping you guys out.
The notion that they have to move from here is going to be such a yank if they relocate to either the library, or the Civic Center, or ETHS. I can't imagine what a disruption and a yank that is going to be. And I just don't know why the city isn't putting money into this place instead of taking money out of this place.
It's already up and running. Why would you want to move and spend more money to rebuild and to move all that stuff? Again, it's already there.
There are two studios in there, there are two editing suites, and it's a community resource that is in danger of just vanishing. And this is Evanston. We pride ourselves on our love of arts education, our love of freedom of speech. If this shuts down, it's going to be really a tragedy.
I would say vote against closing it, because it's important to people.
The next speakers are Betty Sue Esther, Jason Hayes, Madeline Dupree, and Mimi Peterson.
My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2130 Church Street. Madeline Dupree had to leave. She had to go take care of her mother. What she wanted to say to you was that not to close the dental clinic, that it should be kept open. It's one of the health and safe life institution that we need to keep. Thank you. It was announced at the senior group at Fleetwood Jordan Center. I belong to that group, CM senior. And they told us that the Fleetwood Jordan Center is coming back to family focus. Whoa, we was happy and everything. People wanted it back because they wanted to know when it was coming back. But then I came here, and because you didn't tell us that, one, the program manager might leave, the number of performance will reduce, you didn't tell us that, well, your little clerk up there that you always see at the leaving center, she might be gone. None of these things was told to us. And I thought about it, and I wasn't here last week to speak on it, was due to illness, a toothache, so I needed a dentist. But those two actions of reducing the program and eliminating a program manager, in effect, is closing that center.
I need you to wrap it up.
Thank you. And the other thing with the police department, is doing services, and you're cutting a social service position, but they are involving two actions now where they need a social service. One is with the truancy ordinance that is coming before you, and the other, they deal with the Cook County Housing Authority. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Hayes. I live at 712 Dobson. Thank you for allowing to hear us all tonight. Primarily, I like to echo Chris Ernst's sentiments. You read his statements, and you'll find that I echo many of them. I'm here tonight to speak as a citizen of the Great Eighth Ward. I fear that too much attention has been paid to the vocal minority clamoring after luxury items, such as branch libraries, ECMC, and the Ecology Center, at the expense of basic vital public safety concerns. Now, while I understand the sentiment that by virtue of our already high taxes, we should have every nicety known to man, however, the economic realities of the recession must be faced. The first rule of budgeting is laying out priorities. It's foolish to choose the cable bill over the gas bill, or to skip the mortgage instead of cutting back on dining out. Difficult choices need to be made. Vital services must take priorities over luxuries. Wants must be superseded by needs. While nobody enjoys sacrificing their quality of life, the last thing we want to do is make cuts which may actually cost someone their life. No one wants to see their program cut or their cause ignored, but simply crying out against cuts is not sufficient. Alternatives must be weighed. I understand the outcry against cutting the Ecology Center. After all, we only have one. We already have a fabulous downtown library. Branches are superfluous. I appreciate that the decision to cut both branches was difficult, but ultimately, it was a fair and equitable decision.
I need you to wrap up.
Thank you very much.
Hi. My address is 748 Wesley. And I appreciate the time and the energy that our new city manager has put into trying to come up with a budget without a tax increase. I want to address two issues, so I'm going to try to be very brief, Madam Mayor. First, I'm concerned about the idea of recommending cuts to our fire department. Life Safety Service is a core city service, and this appears to me to be the last place that we should be looking to cut, especially when we're stacking that against our branch libraries, as now two people have been brave enough to say, "We have a beautiful downtown library, and I think that we should really look at cutting the branches." Fire department's already operating from a deficit in manpower, and further reducing that would drastically impact services, I think 70%. It's terrible. It's been 15 years since I've been coming to City Hall to lobby the city council, five city councils, with regard to the care and the maintenance of the parkway trees. It's been 10 years since the city council made a decision to try to fix the mess that was made probably 20 years ago by another city manager, who was looking for places to cut and found that maybe nobody would notice if we stopped trimming our trees. Unfortunately, the taxpayers paid dearly.
Mimi, we need you to wrap up.
Okay, taxpayers have paid a lot of money. We've invested up to $2 million, maybe a little bit more, in new employees, in new equipment, and it's throwing good money after bad to cause us to now have to go into a longer tree trimming cycle, when we have yet to catch up. We're already at nine years, and we're trying to get to three to four. We've invested that money. If we don't continue to maintain the program that we've begun...
Mimi, we really need you to wrap up.
All right, well, thank you very much for your time, and I hope you consider what I've said.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comments. And with the return of our city manager, we can now... You want to take a five-minute break? Absolutely. I didn't have your ecsm off. You had told me to draw a line through, so I didn't have that.
So we've got the presentation we did do last time, other funds in the capital budget. Do you want us to punt it again? We need to talk about it eventually.
All right. How long is it going to take?
It's probably going to take 10, 15 minutes.
Well, let's do it.
And then we'll be done.
Do it.
Because we're basically saying, "Punt the capital budget until after we get the operating budget." We need to say the words.
So let's do that. That's fine.
So I got...
We have a short 15-minute presentation.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before Mr. Lyons gets up and gives a presentation regarding other operating funds, as well as our capital budget, I just want to briefly explain what you have at your seats this evening. First, you should have a hard copy of the revised question and answers dated January 29, 2010. You should have also received another copy of my January 29 memorandum, which outlines some updates from our last meeting. The only change in this memorandum is beginning on page 5, the memorandum from Ms. Johns, the library director. Some of the numbers regarding the hour reductions and the hours of neighboring libraries, the sum of those numbers was not correct, so we have made adjustments there. We have also provided for you this evening two additional memorandums. One is a memo dated February 1, 2010, from Mr. Gaynor to me, in response to a question that was raised by, I believe, Alderman Wilson on the Cultural Arts Fund. And then also a revised memo dated January 28 from Fire And then also a revised memo dated January 28 from Fire Chief Prokowski to me regarding minimum daily staffing levels. This information has an added column of average response times. So, you'd seen an earlier version of this memorandum dated 1/28. We have added since then a column regarding average response times. So, that is the information before you. Again, Mr. Lyons is here. We've spent the majority of our time speaking about the general fund. We would like to just take a brief time to talk about other operating funds, and also a brief discussion on the capital budget. We would be recommending that before we would move forward with any further work on any capital project, once the operating budget is adopted, that we would come back to you to discuss those projects one at a time. You know, given the challenges that we have with the capital budget, we feel that perhaps that's best left till once the operating budget is decided, and then we could come back and speak in more detail about the capital budget. Mr. Lyons?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, city manager. I'm going to go through some slides on all of our other funds, not just our capital, and I'll go through them as quickly as possible in the interest of having input from council. So, tonight we are going to hit the other funds, and this is our, we'll be talking about schedule after that, so I'm just going to go right through this. What are our other funds? Our other funds include enterprise funds, those that are run in a more business-type fashion in that they have their own assets, their own liabilities, and their own fees for service. They do not rely on taxes specifically to complete their mission. Our capital improvements funds, such as the capital improvements fund, also our TIF funds are deemed capital projects funds. Then we have our internal service funds, such as our insurance fund, our fleet services fund. And then finally, one of the, two of the funds that have been in the news quite a bit are police and fire pension funds. Those are our agency and trust or fiduciary funds. So, again, we've talked a lot about the general fund budget tonight, and of that, that budget, we're projecting at about $85 million. Our total budget is $234 million, so you can see the general fund makes up just over 40 percent of that. Yet, it still encompasses a majority of our staff. So, you can see in our other areas, it's where we're spending capital, it's where we're using contractual assistance, it's our pension funds. Those wouldn't fall into the same category as our major operating funds. A lot of times, people do get confused over the way that fund accounting needs to be looked at, and that's a requirement all cities in the 48 states, I think they do it in Alaska and Hawaii as well, use fund accounting, and that can be confusing. So, what we've done here with this graph is to say, well, who's spending the dollars? So, in this graph, you can see, for instance, Public Works, you see that very large slice of the pie. That's because that includes Public Works, streets and sanitation, water, sewer, capital projects. So, that includes all of those items, and that's why you'd see Police and Fire not being quite as big as that Public Works slice, even though they are a major part of our operating expenses. So, our enterprise funds. The enterprise funds, we include parking, sewer, and water, for the most part, and I'm not going to read all these to you. I can just point out that our parking fund is operating very well. We are looking at a number of issues at the Parking Committee for changes in our parking deck utilization, new programs. One of the things I would point out is that presently, with the current debt load, our parking fund isn't self-sufficient. That's why we have the TIF funds in place, and that's what they are helping with those funds. Our debt load is targeted to be paid down before those TIF funds expire, so our goal is to make the parking fund self-sufficient like any revenue fund. Our water fund accounts for all of the water sales to both Evanston residents, as well as the Northwest Water Commission and the City of Skokie. We are presently looking at, per council direction, ways to expand our services, but our goal is to grow our system, to make it, it is a great resource, to make it a better resource for the City of Evanston. Right now, in the past three to four years, this isn't any news, our total consumption and pumpage has gone down. So, that's partially from weather and partially from conservation. Unfortunately, that means that that total amount of pumpage means less revenues to support our capital program. So, we hope to come back to the council during 2010 and talk about the Malcolm Pirney rate study, and talk about the needs of our capital program versus rates that can be looked at to see if we can increase the water rate at the same time that a sewer rate has changed on the other way. But water and sewer work hand in hand. So, these are things, as the manager pointed out, we want to bring back to you after the operating budget is completed. Again, as noted, the sewer fund, it's one that is in a little bit more dire straits than the water fund, only because we've done such a great job of rebuilding that infrastructure. Over the past two decades, the council has approved a tremendously large capital project, and we're paying down the debt on that project. We should have our highest debt payment in the next two to three years, and then it will start to drop off. So, at that point in time, we should see some relief in the total cost of operating the sewer utility and be able to get back to doing some of the more day-to-day maintenance issues, replacing some of our older, smaller sewer systems that were not a part of the nearly $200 million replacement program. Our internal service funds. One of our larger internal service funds now is the insurance fund. Before this year, we only had liability and workers' comp deemed to be a part of our insurance fund. We are now self-funding our health insurance. As a part of that self-funding, we have joined the Intergovernmental Personal Benefits Co-op, and we have a rate stabilization for the next 19 months. So, the rate that we have in this budget will not change until June 30, 2011, for our insurance costs. Just another note, dental insurance is 100 percent paid by employees for the city. On the other side of the insurance fund is what has been traditionally in this, in this fund, in that is our liability and workers' comp, our property liability. All of these types of coverages are included in this self-insurance fund. We insure all of our own claims up to $2 million, so that means that, for the most part, we pay claims and don't have insurance. The $2 million is for an excess large claim, so that we are covered in the long haul. The fund also maintains reserves, but we have been spending down those reserves because we've been fairly efficient in settling claims. Because of that, one of the things that's added to the general fund deficit this year is the fact that we need to add, we're adding about 1.6 million into this insurance fund. We need to be funding all of those workers' comp, all those property claims at the proper level. So, this is, for the most part, a general fund expense, a little bit in water, sewer, and parking, but the bulk of it comes out of the general fund. So, that's one of the major contributors to the general fund deficit. One of our other internal service funds, and we've talked about it, is the Fleet Fund. We have been looking over the last year and a half at reductions to the fleet. Also included in this budget is reduction in fleet hours. That's, you've seen that under a separate cover. The Fleet Fund is responsible for taking care of all maintenance, and it is also where we track the replacement of city vehicles. And finally, we've had many discussions about the police and fire pension funds over the past year and a half, and even prior to that. We are currently at 42.9 and 41.2 respectively funded for those two funds. The total unfunded liability is approximately $158 million as of our most recent actuarial report. And as we've discussed with the council, we have been funding at the proper level. We have gone with more conservative assumptions, and we will continue to review those. Our actuarial study will be coming up for the next year's audit, and we will provide that to you as soon as it becomes available. One of the things that is our largest cost, and you'll see it in this year's budget as a closer comparison, is that our IMRF costs went from 8 percent of salaries to almost 12 percent, and that was mostly due to the payoff of our early retirement initiative, and that will go away after 10 years. But that's compared to our normal cost, 15.2 and 18.1 percent for police and fire respectively. And those normal costs will stay fairly constant over time. That is, the costs to pay the current staff's pensions, if we're putting away the proper amount. When we put in the amounts that we need as a catch-up due to investment losses, most recently, as every pension fund faced, our total costs are up at 61.6 and 68.8 percent, when you look at the total amount contributed to the pension funds as a percent of payroll. We, again, are looking at this issue as a part of the general fund budget to say, can we put anything more into the pension funds to start to reduce these numbers, and we'll continue to look at that each and every year to catch up on this funding situation. So, we went through the other funds fairly quickly. We just want to, as the manager pointed out, talk a little bit about the capital improvements fund. And I think that the critical part to remind everyone is, is that our capital improvements fund is solely reliant on grants, motor fuel tax, or intergovernmental revenues, and debt service. So, the debt service is another way of saying property tax. We issue general obligation bonds and then pay property taxes for those projects in the capital improvements fund. For those projects in the water fund or in the sewer fund, those fees pay off that debt. So, one of the issues that we need to come back to you regarding is our debt issuance. In this capital improvements plan year, we have approximately $15 million in new debt that would be issued if all of the projects currently specified moved forward. As we pointed out, we don't plan to do that. We plan to come back to you with that detailed program. We will move ahead on those situations where the funding is completely covered by other entities, such as the most recent motor fuel tax ordinance, I'm sorry, resolution that went through. So, that, those are eight streets that are totally covered by motor fuel tax. Just to give you a five-year summary of where we're at, we had a 9-10 budget of $32 million. We did not spend all of that, and part of that was because we had projected to issue debt, and we did not. So, we've been cutting back on the capital projects. But when that happens, you tend to be pushing out the hump in the carpet, if you will. So, we've done the same in 10-11, where we've removed some of the capital projects, and we're at $37 million. For 11-12, you see that $64 million. A big chunk of that is Crown, a big chunk of that is a new Civic Center. These are items that have been in the capital plan for a while. So, we think that those things in this new economy need to be discussed as far as our ability to do those in this next five years, given our current debt load. Again, this is just another view. We certainly don't, would not anticipate issuing $50 million in debt in 11-12. If we were doing the Crown or the Civic Center, we would assume that we'd be moving forward to that, with that, if we'd gotten a large federal funding or any other kind of a grant that would allow us to proceed. So, another way to look at our capital projects is by our funding source. So, we don't rely solely on general obligation debt. We do, you can see on the far-right column, 15 million, that's the debt service. We did not issue any this year, and we still have a reserve balance in the capital improvements fund. But you can see, we have other areas of funds, so 4.4 million from grants, 1.8 million from motor fuel tax revenues. Our E911 fund has been great as far as funding some of those critical projects at the E911 center. So, that's been a great help to the capital projects for the city. The fleet amount that you see there is the actual expense with the 1.7 million, what we plan to buy for vehicles next year. The water revenue at $8 million, that is, again, looking at both a mixture of water debt, where we would have water bonds or general obligation bonds funded by the Water Department, along with operating revenues diverted for capital purposes. As you can see, the sewer revenue, $875,000. That is only for CIPP lining and other critical capital maintenance items. We do not plan to do any major sewer capital projects funded from the sewer fund next year. If we are allowed, if we are able to get grants, we will move forward with those projects upon acceptance by the council.
You said, you said if we get grants, did you mean loans?
Actually, I'm hoping, as you know, we recently were able to get the IEP where they were providing both grants and zero-interest loans for the first time. So, we are still exploring the zero-interest loan part, and we certainly, if they're, the last one that we were looking at was a 75-25 split, it was still only 25 percent, but it was still, that was part of the grant for that loan, along with that loan. So, that was a new one for them, and we are, have actually heard that they may extend that type of financing to the water systems that municipalities have. So, that would be good news for us as well, since we think we have a lot of projects that would qualify.
I just wrote Senator Durbin, at Dave Stoneback's request, asking that the federal government put several billion more dollars into water, and listing a large number of shovel-ready projects that we had. So, there is a push, and some interest in the part of the federal government in doing that. Don't count on any checks soon.
Well, we would expect nothing less than another 18 million.
One of the things that, we do like to see those grants, and we'll move expeditiously on them, but we also want to keep a minimum reserve balance in the capital improvements fund, such that if we have an emergency project that needs to be done, we would have the funds available to take care of it, especially if it's not a water, not a sewer, and not a parking project. We will need to have some money in reserves in the capital projects fund to take care of, I'm trying to think of, if we're a bridge project that came up, and we had no other source of funds, but we had to repair a bridge over the canal, that kind of a project is not inexpensive. So, this, this next slide is just to take a look at how are we spending the dollars. So, for instance, the administration, no, we are not spending $300,000 on an administrative project. That is actually the transfer for all of the engineers, et cetera, to the general fund for all of their services out of the capital improvements fund. But then you see our other areas, technology, facilities, fire, library, parks, forestry, police, Public Works, and economic slash community development. And I'd be, in the detail that you've received, and it's also online, we do have the details for these.
Marty, the technology allocation, just explain that again. I mean, you're saying for, it is, this is for an indication as to the purpose of...
Right. So, for instance, our camera project for, out in the community, part of our strategic plan, that this would also be replacement of our servers and other infrastructure. That's all purchased out of the capital improvements fund and not out of the general fund.
So, the reduction or consolidation of that department with other departments and the reduction of forces, does it impact the kind of capital?
Actually, I think it will. Again, this is our, the capital improvements team sat down and cut back from about $50 million down to the $37 million, but it still has a $15 million bond issue. So, the chances that all of these projects by source or by type, in this case, will stay at that level. We think that they'll come down a little bit based on what's happened in both the general fund and our desire to minimize our debt that we're going to have to issue in order to move forward with any of these projects.
City manager, I would suggest, one of the things that happens is that, once we make a decision, then in February, we have not had the opportunity to further discuss certain projects that then constitutes the overall plan. And I think we need to make sure we have those markers, so that we're not just chasing after whatever's proposed to us two days or three days prior to the expenditure.
Alderman, John Bev, she's member of the council. I agree with you 100 percent, and that's why we're not going to be asking you for a mass approval of these projects. This, at this point, remains a distance of wish list from your staff. I'm also concerned of the high level of... I'm also concerned of the high level of debt that the city is carrying, and I don't know, Marty, if we left the slide in, the talks about...
We did not.
The debt. We are currently over, how many million dollars over the council's debt ceiling for capital projects?
Twenty-five million. We're at approximately a hundred-and-fifteen million dollars in general obligation debt. The last time the policy was updated was two thousand and four, and it refers to a ninety-million-dollar debt limit. So, we need to address that, that part of our capital financing.
And Alderman John Beattie, that plus other issues makes me reluctant to bring these things forward. We're already twenty million dollars over the council's agreed-upon debt ceiling for capital projects. I don't think it makes sense to say, oh, let's just add another fifteen million to it, because it sounds good or we have need. So, we're going to ask the council, probably if the, if the council finishes the budget on the eighth, maybe as soon as the twenty-second of February, to come back and have more detailed discussions about this, because I'm really concerned at the level of debt we're currently carrying for capital projects.
No, that's, that's, that's the point I wanted to make, and City Manager agrees.
Marty, I was just wondering, and Alderman John Beattie makes a good point, this technology number. I'm curious to know, even though the police have four-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand in this, in this capital projects by function, couldn't some of that million-one-hundred-thousand be from nine-one-one projects? Because, for the most part, they are technology projects.
Yes, they are. That, that is correct. And I would be happy to kind of cross-reference the two tables, so you get a feel for that.
And I, I don't believe, and are you chairing that committee now? Colleen?
I've heard that.
That they, that there are no new bond issues there, and that that's pretty much cash out of that...
Yeah. If you, if you see right there, the E-nine-one-one, I went back a slide, one-point-six million dollars. The, the, the group has been saving the, the dollars for this purpose.
So, I, I don't think that's a reflection of work going on necessarily in the IT department here at City Hall, but nine-one-one. Maybe, I mean, I'm, it appears as though it is.
And actually, I do believe also a big part of it's in facilities, because a lot of it was infrastructure. So, we set it up inside facilities, so it's in both places. So, that's it. Went through the, that capital very quickly. We will come back. This is just a brief look. We have the meeting on Wednesday night. Manager, if you'd like to take over?
And again, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for letting us talk. Obviously, the other funds are, are more than half of the city's budget, but I really want to focus on the question that Alderman John Beattie raised, and that is the feeling that the council needs to go through this in a finer detail than you have before. I think Alderman Rainey's questions as far as what's being paid out of what, we need to present that in very clear terms to you and make also then very clear what is being paid out of the, out of the debt funds. So, that, that, not all money is equal, and we need to make sure that the council's aware of that and free to set priorities. And then to make the ultimate decision, how much additional debt do you want to issue on top of the debt that's already in existence for general capital projects? So, our plan would be to come back to the council, hopefully at the end of February or first meeting in March, to, to wrap up those discussions.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Is this a more informal council meeting? May we sit, or should we stand?
You may sit.
I know that this is very difficult, and especially difficult because we have so many new members of our staff and so many new members of the council. But I can honestly say that I've not seen such a depth of inquiry and concern by any council that I ever served with. So, I'm, I'm just really grateful to all of you. Having said that, it's, it's not easy to move on, and I know that the more we could drag this out, the more stress we would all suffer from. So, I am going to move, right now, that we accept the city manager's recommendation to close the South and North Branch Library at a savings of four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars.
Alderman, there is a second. Alderman Wynn?
Are we sitting?
Yes.
I don't think we've had enough discussion about some of the other cuts in order to, to move forward on that. The South Branch is in my ward. It serves a very broad section of the city. I don't support closing the branches. I think it's unfortunate that in the city manager's memo, the only way that it was proposed to close, to maintain the branches, was to close the main library for a day. I, I think that's a, not an acceptable suggestion to me and to most of the other members of the council, to close the main library for a day. I would like to find ways in which we could find the money to keep the main library open for that seventh day, and, and look again for the solutions for maintaining the North and South Branch. The South Branch has been there for, I believe, its entire life. It serves the citizens from a walking distance, from not only the third ward, but the fourth ward, the eighth ward, and the ninth ward. Lincoln School, the school my children attended, has forty percent low income. Children there, children who are at Lincoln, who are from the third, fourth, eighth, and ninth wards, and that is their opportunity to go to the walking distance to a local library. There are a lot of outreach programs that come from the South Branch. It's also in walking distance of Nichols Middle School, and we heard a wonderful description of how it serves the students at Park School. I don't want to give up on the branch libraries. They've come forward, the, the task force from the, the library board has stepped forward. Karen Terry told us all of the actions that they've taken in the last week. I think it's premature to, to close the branches without giving them an opportunity to do what they, do what the library board is saying that they can do, and the supporters are saying that they would like to do, which is raise funds and figure out a funding stream to maintain the, the North and South Branch. I don't support Special Service District, and I absolutely don't support a separate library district. I think that's a mistake. But I think that this community can come, come up with the ways in which we maintain both the North and South Branch. The North Branch is an economic generator on Central Street, and there's no question that there's, that that's valuable to not only the residents there, but to all of the merchants there. Central Street is vibrant. I wish that Main Street was as vibrant as it wa, as it is. But I think both the North and South Branch serve a different need in the community than the main library does. I agree, the main library needs a more, a better collection, but the North and South Branch and all the literature that we've received from the library supporters indicates that branch libraries act in a different function with respect to library services. So, I, I strongly disagree. I think that the council would be acting prematurely to move to close these at this time. I think that we've got a lot of community support for coming up with alternative ways of maintaining a funding stream, and I would like to give the North and South Branch one year. If that doesn't happen after a year, then I would have a different view, but I want to give them one year.
Madam Mayor, I made a motion, and then I was cut off immediately by acknowledging Alderman Wynn.
Okay.
I wasn't able to defend my motion.
All right. Alderman Rainey, defend your motion.
I don't think it needs defending. I think the very people, all these poor needy people that the branches are serving, are the very people who are going to be most affected by the tax increases that we have to levy in order to support and continue them. They've, they've been on the chopping block for years, and I was figuring today the amount of money we would have saved had they not been open all these years. But no other council had the, the courage, or perhaps the financial situation that would have given them the courage, to close the branches. They are redundant. I believe, for the most part, they, you know, I, I would love to keep them open. I would love to add five or six other branches all over town. But, you know, saying that, saying that is, is just so irresponsible. They are redundant, they cost us money, they cost us close to half a million dollars a year. Taxpayers can't afford it. We have, we have fire service that is in jeopardy. Times are, are going to be extended if we make the two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-dollar cut in the fire department that I'm hoping we can save. This, this is a very serious situation, and to say, give the, the libraries another year to raise money that is impossible to raise is only dragging our feet and creating more of a stressful situation on, on this community, and we will have the same conversation in one year. We've been having the same conversation for ten years. The library supporters of the branches have never done anything to, to make any kind of changes, and the reason they haven't is because there aren't private funds to keep the libraries open. It's, it's just, it's just a, a waste of time, and I would really ask the council to move on. February ninth is in a week. We, it's not too soon to be doing this. We've known we had this budget to pass for months, and for twelve months, since we passed the last budget. We've known this is coming. And so, to say that we need more time, we don't have more time, Alderman Wynn. Perhaps the people in your ward can well afford it, but I am telling you that the people in my ward, and I'm going to stand up for them until the bitter end, because they cannot afford it. They can absolutely not afford it. Got people living one-half block from Howard Street, paying eleven thousand a year in property taxes, and that has got to stop. That's just got to stop. You don't know what that's like, but I can tell you that the people in my, I, I know you know what eleven thousand in taxes is like, but you don't know what it's like not being able to pay those taxes. So, I am asking those members of this council who think it is important to have these libraries as a community center, to burden the rest of the city, to pay for them, think again, because it's wrong, and it, it indicates that you're not in touch with economic reality as it's affecting people not only in this town, but across this country.
Alderman Grover?
We've seen a lot of library supporters come to the podium and give us these wonderful stories, tell us these stories about how they've been longtime patrons of our branch libraries and the main library and the Willmet Library. And if I were you, I would not be persuaded based upon stories about custom and convenience. I don't find it persuasive, and I don't expect you would either. For me, my primary concern about the branch library, and more specifically, the North Branch Library, which is in the seventh ward, is that the North Branch Library is an anchor to Central Street, to its business district, in a way that very few other businesses are. The seventy-five thousand people who walk through the front door of the branch library in Central Street, I don't see a way that we can replicate that many people on Central Street by any other entity. It is a, it is a business anchor for that business district, and the Central Street Merchants Association has spoken to us and affirmed the importance, the vitality of Central Street and the importance of that branch library to Central Street. We have heard from the Central Street Neighbors Association, which again has told us that that branch library is vitally important to commerce on Central Street. The library board has put us in a different position than our previous year's discussions about branch libraries, and that is, the library board is, the Board of Trustees is supportive of branch library services, not just at our two branches, but with the thought to expanding services. And that our branch libraries are important to the library system as a whole, and not just to those neighborhoods that primarily use the branch libraries. So, as I said, we're in a different position now. We're not, we can talk about long-term sustainability of funding for branch libraries, because we have now a task force that is already on the job. They're pursuing the private fundraising. They've asked supporters essentially to put their money where their mouth is and find a way for us to sustain the branch libraries beyond the next fiscal year. So, the issue is really this year's funding. It's finding a way to keep those doors open on the North and South Branch Libraries for this additional year, and I agree with Alderman Wynn, that I think I would have a different feeling about it a year from now if we're still talking about funding for branch libraries. To keep them open for this year, I think amounts to finding a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in the budget. As with Alderman Wynn, I don't like the idea of all, and I don't support the idea of closing our main library for that extra day a week. For me, that's unworkable. The cost for that is a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, and I think that we have already created the kind of, created budget cuts that give us the wiggle room to find that a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, which paired with the additional cuts that our city managers proposed, would keep the libraries open for this additional year and allow the branch library supporters group to put their money where their mouth is and come up with the business plan that makes this happen over the long term. So, I, I urge you to please consider helping us find ways to keep the main library open for that extra day a week, for that Friday, so that we can keep our library system mostly how it is for another year, the difference being now that we have a group that's working to find the funding long-term for us.
Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would have a hard time improving on what either Alderman Wynn or Alderman Grover has said. They're my sentiments exactly. We have spent a considerable amount of time and encouraged a lot of people in this community, and a lot of staff, and, and our city manager, to look at alternative ways, and they've done so in, in ways that I think indicates that they are very passionate about this, they are very smart about this, and it's not the same old, same old, you know, closing the libraries every couple of years. I be, I do believe this is a different situation, and I do believe we, we have that year. I believe that we can do that, and like Alderman Grover said, if I was sitting here a year from now without seeing much improvement or any improvement in terms of funding, or some new ideas, some creativity, whatever, I would, might have a totally different opinion. But the North Branch, we know, is an economic engine. If you look at the cardholders of the North Branch, they all, they pretty much duplicate the users of the Willmet Library, too. I could see most of the cardholders that originally frequented the North Branch easily going to Willmet. It's a new library, as ours is downtown. It's free parking all the time, and many, many of the amenities, the stores, the shopping, the restaurants are very, very similar to Central Street. I do think we would lose a lot of revenue. And for the money that we put into the hundred and, or two-hundred, roughly two-hundred, two-hundred thousand dollars each year to the branch, I don't know what amount of public economic development it would take to bring those seventy-five thousand visits back, but I think it would be considerably more than two-hundred thousand. We're talking about a large number of people who frequent that area, and I don't think we can replace that foot traffic with the, the amount we spend on the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights. Ah, seeing lots of lights. Alderman Burris?
I thank you. I, I am definitely pro-library. I just haven't seen a compelling statement of how these will be funded by private sources. We've heard examples of foundation grants for landscaping and computers. I'm here to tell you, to get foundation grants for operating support for salaries is really very, very difficult, and I don't see that happening from foundation sources, from grants. That's, I think that, that's the pipe dream. And my... And my initial thought is that we close both branches and that we can keep the North Branch sort of not rented out. And a year from now, we do come back. And has this library board, has this group put together enough funding to reopen and possibly open a West Side Library as well, but in buildings that we own? South Side Library, it doesn't serve, it serves a very small portion of the 9th Ward. I know it probably serves a small portion of the 8th Ward. Why can't we have it in a building like the Levy Center? To incorporate kids and our seniors together in one space? Or at Robert Crown? Something like that. Or partner maybe with the Ridgeville Park District? Why aren't we bringing them more into this discussion? How can we partner better? They have buildings that I'm sure that we can have space in. West Side, I know Alderman Jean Baptiste and I have talked about a building that we already own on the West Side. But currently, our budget does not allow us that extra year. And if this, this group can actually come together and, and have the money, you know, let's keep the collection in reserve. We can pack it up and see what happens a year from now. But financially, I just don't see how the numbers work. And closing the main branch library seems actually outrageous. When I saw that proposal, I, I was, I was, I was pretty upset by that notion. I do spend time at the, the main land, uh, main branch library. It's an outstanding library, outstanding children's section. They have amazing resources for all members of the community, not just certain areas of the community. I agree that the parking can be a challenge there, but I, I just don't see how, how we can keep the branch libraries open, but get rid of a dental clinic or get rid of mental health services or get rid of services that really help the, the safety of our community. That's just not right. So like I said, let's put them in the collection on hold and see if, that these folks can actually raise the funds a year from now.
Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I really don't support a tax increase. And I feel like to try to get this into the budget is really going to require that. We, we really have to draw the line in the sand somewhere. Everybody else is going to raise taxes, the state will raise taxes. And at some point, we have to just say, okay, this is enough. It's too easy to say, all right, we're going to borrow some more money for the capital improvement plan. We're already, you know, tens of millions of dollars over the allocated projection for that. I realize that's a different fund, but I don't want to take the easy way out here. With the budget that's proposed, 1,800 people aren't going to have a dentist. Fire equipment's not going to be fully manned. And I've looked at this very closely. I've, I've tortured over it, I've labored over it, I've talked to many members of the community. And to me, one of the things that this boils down to is that there is not just a reasonable alternative, but there's an outstanding alternative to this particular service. And for many of the things that are being cut, there is no alternative. The Ecology Center, these other programs, there isn't a reasonable alternative. There's not a reasonable alternative for the parents who aren't going to have a dentist to take their kids to. I appreciate the great mobilization that people have undertaken. It's, and it's an outstanding response. I'm encouraged by that. But the task force isn't money in hand, and we need money in hand right now. To keep the libraries in the budget is going to have to assume that the vast majority of the other cuts are going to have to stick. And, you know, when we're looking at life, safety and other issues, I don't feel comfortable with that at all. At this point, it's almost like we are building the entire budget around this one issue. We keep coming back and trying to look for where else can we cut a little bit more money? Where else can we get a little bit more money here, a little bit more money there? Fire another person here, fire another person there? Going back to the last session we had with the proposed additional cuts, you know, some of the things I said I could live with, going back and looking at them more closely and realizing the impact, I don't know that I can live with a lot of those. Or maybe not a lot of them, but at least for some of those. Some of these things are going to significantly impact the day-to-day services. They're going to significantly impact revenue generating programs that we already have in place. And to compromise those things that we're doing well for something that has, you know, and it's more than just a convenience. I recognize that these are an important part of, parts of the community. But the cost to me doesn't outweigh the benefits. And unfortunately, given the circumstances we're in, I, I'm, I can't support keeping the, keeping the branch libraries.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Alderman Wilson expressed some of our concerns very well. When we first started talking about the branch libraries, I'm, I'm expressed my early support of them. I'm very, very concerned about making available to neighborhoods and people who have difficulty traveling, parents of small children, the availability of libraries in their neighborhoods. However, I was very clear to everyone I talked to and said, if we're going to keep the branch libraries, we have to find a way for them to pay for themselves. There's just not room in this budget. It's a very serious budget. We've lost about 57 positions within the city. I think this hits everyone on the council very hard when we see people that we know and that we've worked with laid off, when we see the possible service cuts that we're looking at. What really brought this home to me was we asked the city manager to see if he could find room in the budget in order to accommodate the branch libraries. Now, this was after I had gone to the library supporters and said, I think I see a way that we can fund these branch libraries through an SSA. The response back from that, and I did talk to the city manager and, and our staff about it, we determined that that was a, a possible way that this could work. But I received no support at all from the library supporters. And I would have expected a little bit more in a positive response, let's look at this as a possibility. I want everyone to understand that an SSA would have been a, basically a tax increase on people who live in the area surrounding, surrounding the library and the SSA. The benefit of that would have been that it would have brought some dollars in for economic development in the two business areas, both on Main Street and, and on Central Street, as well as pay for the library. But it would not have imposed a general tax increase on the entire city as a separate library taxing district would have done. A separate library taxing district also would have required a referendum, which I, in my opinion, would have failed. And I am not interested in starting out down a road that I think will fail. Now that said, I, I do believe that my decision was made up when, after we had asked the city manager for his recommendation for other cuts that might fund the branch libraries when those came back. And clearly, what was going to happen was that the main library was going to be impacted. With closure of one day a week, with shorter hours, a closing time of 8:00 PM, which would have meant that community organizations, which depend on a central location to hold their meetings and events, basically would have been precluded from holding those meetings at the, at the main library. Income from those meetings also would have been affected. So my, my effort to aid the plight of the branches has apparently failed. And I apologized to all of you for that. I wish we had been successful on it. I do not see a way that this is going to succeed. I want you all to understand that we have tried our best to look at every, every dollar that's available, but there are some very serious cuts that are going to affect the most vulnerable in our community, that I think we just real, really are going to take our, our attention, the dental clinic being one of them.
Alderman Holmes?
I think, like everyone else up here, I certainly support the libraries. And I'm really want to applaud all of those who have joined to form the Branch Love Group or the task forces that wants to work on this. And I want to sort of echo Alderman Burris in terms of why not keep working to do that? And since we do own the North Branch, that's a possibility. And we do have other buildings that we own, that we might be able to use the resources of our library staff to be creative in terms of finding out how to provide some services in the meantime, in a very creative way, to some of these other districts in other areas in the city where we might have buildings. I am very tongue-vision about this budget. I have been since October. $9.5 million is just beyond my thinking. And I know that we've got to find ways in which to do, to cut it. There's just no other thing to do. And I think that we have to, we asked the city manager to give us a balanced budget. And that's what he did. And this is one of the recommendations. I've been on the council five years now, and it's not the first time that we've had this proposed. And I think that this is the year that we have to vote to close the branches.
Alderman Winn? I pass. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
For the last, previous eight years that I've been on the council, it's nine years now, I have voted to take the branch libraries off the table as candidates for budget cuts. And in fact, we did entertain at some point the possibility of opening a West Side Branch Library. And I have argued that, you know, I didn't think that the distribution of library services had been equitable. And they're not. Neil Nye had done a report where he said on the west side of town, it's like a donut hole. And we the hole. So that the services have not been reaching us. And I think that it's still a challenge for the library staff, for the director, to find a way to extend the services to everybody who needs the services. At our last meeting, I did ask the city manager to please come back with a plan to see how we provide, you know, how can we pay for the branch libraries and how do we extend library services? And he did come back with his proposal. And like you, Melissa, I don't think that, you know, it's the only way that we could approach this. But I don't think that we have a solution in hand right now in light of the budget shortfall. So I have to join those who will vote to withdraw the funding. Because at this particular point in time, we are making a decision in light of the total $9.5 million shortfall that we have to, to make up. So I'm hoping that Central Street can find some other ways to maintain the, the economic energy in the area. And I'm hoping that those on the south end of town who do use the South Branch Library will find a way to get to the central branch libraries, to our main branch library. But at this particular point in time, I don't see the, how we go forward, and I don't see a plan in place that could save the branch libraries.
Okay, I have a few comments to make. I can count the votes, so I'm not going to say a great deal. But I would support Alderman Burris's suggestion that we keep the, the North Branch building and see where the economy has gotten and where the library task force has gotten in a, in a year. It is an economic, the North Branch is an economic engine for the Central Street group. It is also a wonderful library and tremendously important to many of the children who live around it. I can understand that stacked up against a dental clinic, it, it fails the test and against fire service response time. I, I understand why the votes are what they are, and it is a terribly difficult year. But the library is, both libraries are indeed wonderful for the community, for their neighborhoods. And I support Alderman Fisk. I thought the SSA was a good solution. And I'm sorry that there wasn't more support for it. But I would strongly urge us to preserve the North Branch building and to see what the group can come up with if they stick together for a year. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In that same light, I'm, I'm not sure what our lease term is on the South Branch, but I would ask that we see that through for the, for its lease term as well.
I don't know. Put that in task. Yeah.
I, I believe, Madam Mayor, Alderman Fisk, as we detailed before, there, it's a 15-month, and Paul is, is coming in and can help fill in the blanks. 15 more months remaining on the lease at South Branch. Is that sound about right?
The South Branch lease expires in April of 2012. But there is a five-month, 150-day out clause where the city can terminate the lease with five months written notice.
So we would leave that for a, the decision at this point or a decision once the budget's been adopted as to how you'd like to, with the disposition of that lease? If you'd like to hold on to it, you'd like just to give the notice? I don't know that that needs to be a decision right now.
We don't, we don't need to decide.
Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, if Alderman Holmes has no objection, I'd like to amend my motion to eliminate the funding for the branch libraries by indicating or adding to that, that the North Branch Library building remain empty until a decision is made in the next funding year.
Thank you.
I would accept that amendment.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, could we have a roll call on this?
Roll call is on the amendment to the motion by Alderman Rainey?
No, it's on the motion. The motion as amended.
All right, excuse me. Alderman Grover?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Burris?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk?
Wait a second. Point of order, I, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify that we are not making the decision on the, on whether to maintain the lease on the South Branch at this time?
Right, not now.
Fine, I understand that. Okay. Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Winn?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
No.
Six to three.
Six to three, the motion passes. It's after 10 o'clock at night. Do you want to continue this meeting? Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I would like not to have had to have this meeting, but since we're here, could we do a few more items?
Sure.
I would like to propose something to the council in terms of the fire service cut. We have before us a cut of $279,000.
I like the first one better.
$275,000, which, as a result of the cut, would reduce the number of staffing to 23 per shift, which according to our firefighters would conceivably increase response time. By that, for those of you who have in the audience and at home who have not studied this, what that means is that a certain number of firefighters, we require to be on a vehicle going to an incident. If we don't have that number, then that vehicle is put out of service, which means that if, you know, if, if an incident occurs at a station where a vehicle is out of service, then your response time could increase. And the fire ratings could increase, which affect insurance, et cetera. That's probably not likely to happen, given our, given our history. But response times will increase. I have asked the fire department, and I know others of you have, to come up with alternative cuts within their department, which to me is probably the most responsible offset for a budgeting issue. And therefore, I'm going to move that we restore or eliminate the cut of 275,000. But before I do, I'd like to read a list, if you all don't mind, of the cuts being proposed by the fire department and... by the fire department and more or less signed off on by the fire chief. Doesn't come to 275,000, but it comes to about 180-some-thousand. Would you mind if I did that? And I can give you the page and the account number. On page 82, in the online budget, these items are on that page under the fire department. Item 61065, which is special project employees. It's a $10,000 item. It's been agreed by everybody, including the chief, that that could be eliminated. That's something that had to do with emergency response, which we now have an employee who can handle. Printing, 6221, we can eliminate $1,500. Equipment maintenance, 62235, we can eliminate $5,000. Computer maintenance, we can eliminate half or $5,000. Travel and training, we can eliminate $30,000.
Alderman Rainey, could you give us the, the number as well?
The number, I know, I'm sorry. Computer maintenance, 62250, okay, eliminate $5,000. 62295, travel and training, eliminate $30,000. That's of a 67,800 budget. 62335, data processing, no elimination. 62360, membership dues, no elimination. 62540, telecommunications, reduce $5,000. Is somebody from our staff adding these up? Okay. 62540, telecommunications.
64540.
62540, it's tele- Okay, sorry, my, my issues got that screwed up. 65010, publications, $1,500. I think I have this right. 650120, is that clothing? They can accept a 35, well, whatever the clothing one is, it's, it's, they can accept a $35,000 cut there.
You mean 3,500?
No, 35,000. The amount budgeted is 56,000. Okay? Okay, 75, I'm on the wrong line. 65095, office supplies, they can cut 2,500. There's an item, commodity, 65125, 25,000.
Other commodities?
61110, cut of 38,500. I think that comes to 59,500, I think. What does that come to? Thirty-eight, five, it's item 61110, it's another overtime budget. You can read them off, I'm, look at me. What did we get? What's the total? Is it about 59,500?
10,000, 1,500, 5,000, 30,000.
You missed a 5,000. No, no, let me read them to you, okay? Just the numbers. 10,000, 1,500, 5,000, 5,000, 30,000, 5,000, 1,500, 35,000, 2,500, 7,000, 25,000, and 38,500.
A question for Alderman Rainey while we're adding? And these are ongoing cuts? So they go away forever?
Well, these are cuts that can be, these are cuts, these aren't systemic issues here. These are cuts that they can sustain this year.
So it's a one-time reduction?
Hopefully, hopefully not. But for example, furniture and equipment, 25,000. I mean, if a chair breaks in a couple of years, they're going to have to replace it.
But this is a, so this would be something that would not be budgeted then 12 months from now?
I'm not certain of that. We had that discussion. And right now, this can be sustained, not because they have a backlog of money or a reserve or anything, but they are willing to accept this. For example, this special project employee, $10,000. They don't need that money for anything. They have somebody else doing that job. This, this is so that we can, this is within the department that we want to add to response time. They want to allow for these cuts. I mean, the fire department came up with over 300,000 in cuts. But, but the fire chief weighed in and said, these are what could be tolerated. And so therefore, out of respect for the head of the department, I'm accepting these.
So that would be for one year?
It would be for one year.
Next year, we would have to replace the 159,000.
And so, we might have to have this discussion about increasing fire department response time next year. But hopefully, there'll be additional revenue someplace next year that would help out here. But I think, I think to sustain increased response times for one year is absolutely, physically, and administr- and ministerially irresponsible. And as an, as an alderman, I'm, I don't think we should allow it. And if there's any way we can cover it from within the department, and this only covers 159,000, it doesn't cover the whole thing.
Alderman Jean Baptiste, then Alderman Holmes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why these cuts that you've proposed have to be a one-time cut. I mean, it should be integrated into the budget as an ongoing reduction.
Well, but I don't think that's our job. I, I don't know that we do that with every cut.
No, I didn't say that. I'm saying that these line items that you're suggesting that be reduced, seems to me that they should stay reduced. Okay? So that's what I'm saying. I mean, I had that kind of discussion too.
Well, what about, what about the engineering inspect, the electrical inspector? Are we never going to have another electrical inspector? Are we never going to have, you know, another building department head who's an architect?
This, 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 that's the point.
I don't know.
The point is, at the time that we need to make those kind of decisions, then we will consider them.
Well, okay, then I would go along with that. I would go along with that.
Right, right now, these line items, I would suggest that we propose that they be cut and we move on. Okay, as opposed to one-time cut.
I did not understand what you meant, Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Alderman Holmes.
If this is 159 or whatever the total is, what's going to happen with the balance? Because there was a line item of 275. I know that, and I'm looking at a list that, that had a total of 365,000 that the, that had been proposed. So where do we get the balance for the 275? Because that is, would have been the cut that we would need out of the fire department. Is that not correct?
That is correct, Alderman. But I, I think we should do what we can to restore as much overtime as possible.
I agree.
It might not have to be used. I'm not saying restore the 275,000. I'm saying restore 159,500, I believe that's the total, of overtime. Maybe it won't all be used. You can't, you can't rely on it all being used. We might go over it, we might go under it, but at least it's a restoration of some kind.
And I hear that. Except I'm just, you know, I told you, I'm tunnel vision, so I got to understand it. But we still need a $275,000 cut from the fire department. Is that not correct? So if we, if we, if we are taking that off of the table, then we, if we're restoring 159, then we are back, we're in the hole. Is that not correct? I mean, that's-
We're still down 100,000.
Yeah, okay. So that we've got to find that.
I understand that, I understand that.
All right.
But I, my, my only interest is in getting some overtime back in that budget.
And I understand, I certainly won't get response time. I think we all do. So I'm supporting that. But I'm just trying to figure out where, are we going to get the, where's the other money going to come from?
Maybe by Wednesday night, I'll come.
Oh, oh, okay. I mean, and I'm just asking, is the rest of this on the table or no?
I would love to put it on the table, but I'm just saying, Ma, do you have other information? Because I talked, I, I thought that we should run it by the fire chief. And he said 159,500. Now, perhaps, given tonight, they could get together and find other cuts. I don't know. But I certainly understand that we're not restoring all the 275. I don't know if anybody else thinks this is as important as I do. I, I know I've talked to a couple of aldermen who have used the service, who thinks, think it's really important.
Well, I've used it, so I know it's important. But I'm just trying to figure out where we're going to get the rest of the other money. So I, I'm not arguing that at all.
We, we still have to find it. But the thing is, I'm not spending more money by doing this, I'm reducing the amount. That's all.
Oh, I understand. I'm just looking for the difference.
Alderman Fisk.
Madam Mayor, yeah, we just looked for some money for the libraries and couldn't find it. So I, I'm a little bit reluctant. What I'd like to do, Mr. City Manager, is to ask you to look at these cuts. And our next meeting is Wednesday night, is that correct? And for you to talk to the fire chief and see if we can come up with the 275,000 somewhere else in the budget. And then, yeah, the balance, and then back, back to us. I think Alderman Rainey did a great job of reaching out and-
And Alderman Fisk, Alderman Rainey, I think there are probably some of these cuts that, for example, uniforms. We are contractually obligated to provide uniforms. I don't know how realistic a multi-year cut in that area is. But if the, if the will of the council is to direct us within the cuts that are already on the table, to, to use this as a base and to come back to you with a solution, we're happy to do that.
Well, a one-year cut on uniforms is realistic, though.
And Madam Mayor, I think it's just a matter of, I want to make sure the council fully understands, because currently you are balancing this budget with all ongoing money. And there is no one-time money in the mix. And I just want to be, you can do what you like, but I just want to make sure you're very clear. And I would appreciate Alderman Fisk's offer to give us 48 hours to, to at least make it clear to you what we think could be ongoing cuts and what practically perhaps could not be ongoing cuts.
Madam Mayor, if I could just continue for one more second?
Yes.
I, I just want to make it clear that we're not suggesting a reduction in safety for the residents of Evanston.
Right.
And that our response time is going to be, going to be fast and, and not put any, any lives in danger. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Alderman Fisk, members of the council, I, I think I have a cordial but professional disagreement with firefighters and probably also with the fire chief. I think it's very difficult to give a precise measure. What I tried to do for my own edification and shared it with the council was to give you a survey of what some like communities do. And the, and the survey is also, I think, a reasonable person would say inconclusive. Because there are communities of approximately our size, you know, of approximately our square mileage, that, that have response times that are, you know, within 30 seconds of what our current response time is with a lower amount. Now, any number of 100 factors could impact that. I don't know that there's any science that tells you that. So I don't want to dispute what they're saying. But at the same time, I cannot support what they're saying, because I don't have real good facts to support that. So again, if the council would like us to come back with the solution, we're happy to do that.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Mr. City Manager, I think the essence of what Alderman Rainey's proposal is, and what maybe the sentiment of the council, is to maintain response time. And so look for alternative ways. Alderman Rainey submitted a list to you. Take a look at some alternatives to find that contribution from the fire department without reducing response time or increasing response time.
Alderman Burris? I'm sorry, were you done? Alderman Jean Baptiste? Alderman Burris?
Thank you. I was, the last meeting, I asked for an idea of how it would increase workman comp issues for, for, if we do reduce this amount. And if we can get that information, that would be very helpful. That has, did I, did I get it? I missed, sorry. Thought I read everything. And increasing, I, I go back to this again of, the health insurance costs here for firefighters are, is, is really high for the city. And it's high for the city for all employees. And in the budget, you said 5% increase. That's, I, I don't think enough. Gives us an extra $50,000, but that's not a lot of money when we're looking at this budget. I think that's something that we need to revisit yet again, once again, looking at it on a sliding scale basis. That'll help us bring in more revenue. That still hasn't been presented to us. And once I reiterate, somebody that makes $40,000 here pays the same amount as somebody that makes 140,000, doesn't seem equitable. Somebody who makes 12,000 pays the same amount as somebody that makes 140,000. So that's another way to look for money. And we should also talk to the firefighters about the, this health insurance coverage. Are they willing to pay more? Is there negotiating room, even though they're a, a union, obviously? But I think that's an important to look at.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, I'm, you know, I have great respect for our city manager. However, I, I think that we need to do some work as well. We've already been told by the city manager that he disagrees with the fire department and the fire chief. And this is fire science. There, there is a science here. And I think there is a right way and a wrong way to deliver fire service. If we have vehicles that are not staffed, then you are, whoever, whoever is in the territory served by, you know, truck 21 or 22, 24, whatever their numbers are, you are going to experience a delayed response time. Alderman Fisk, saying it will not make it so. If you don't have somebody on that truck, it's not going to get there in time. And don't forget, it is our trucks that have the advanced life support equipment. The trucks are the ones that get to the person laying on the ground first. I'm not even talking about a fire. So we can't guarantee by making this cut that people will not be sick on vacation or otherwise in training or something. If they're not there, you won't get, you won't get the kind of service you're used to. And that concerns me. And I think the survey that we saw has 26 or 28 average firefighters serving. And so I, I, I would really like to see a consultation by the fire department, the fire chief, and the city manager, with everybody having equal weight in that conversation. Because I'm very concerned about a delayed response time. I know the city manager disagrees with it, but he's not the fire chief. He's the city manager. And I think there's, you know, it's, it's like talking to the police chief about a homicide. What the city manager thinks about it could be important. But I think the, the police chief's going to know a little more about a homicide than the, than the city manager. So I, I have to, I have to trust the experts here. And the experts are telling me, you're looking at a, a delayed response time, conceivably. If everybody's present and accounted for and all those vehicles are staffed, everything's going to be status quo. You have a kink in that armor and you're going to have a delayed response time. So I think this community, you know, would, would rather have continued good fire and paramedical service than not.
Alderman Tandem?
I think the peanut gallery is a decision.
Thank you, Mayor. At some point in my discussions with the chief, there was a number, predictable number that, of times that there would be insufficient equipment or men at the scene, or women at the scene. And that, given the number of responses, the average responses every year, that number could be 250 or even higher per year in incidences. That would be short of staff, short of necessary emergency personnel. So I think that, that number- So I think that that number struck me as incredibly high, too high. I mean, that's a lot of, that's a big risk. And I can't see that, I can see how that would happen that many times, given our, the distance of our city, the one-way streets, the narrow streets, the traffic. And I think that we really need to, really, really need to consider restoring the entire amount of overtime that was initially in the budget.
Saying no further lights, I concur with Alderman Tendem that we need to restore the overtime that was in the budget. Having been to fire ops training twice, I learned, as many of the rest of you did, that a fire doubles in one minute. So that's a rather frightening statistic. And also, you need a lot of people there, all working very hard at the same time to get the equipment working and to start putting the fire out. So fire ops training works. I am now a more educated mayor. So I would also like to join the voices, asking the city manager to just take a look at the budget. I believe that we have given you enough direction tonight that you can find some room in it to restore the overtime. All right, we have a motion. Alderman Rainey, would you repeat your motion? It was.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Shaw-Baptiste.
I'm suggesting that, you know, we hold this matter until Wednesday, because we've asked the city manager to, you know, come back with some substitutions. I mean, Alderman Rainey did list a number of them, but it came up to 159.
No, I understand her motion. Was it 159? Alderman Rainey, are you all right with holding it until Wednesday?
I'm all right with the city manager working on this with the fire department to get this covered.
Okay.
My purpose is to get it figured out.
And Alderman Rainey, members of the council, that's my understanding.
Yes.
Then we're fine.
I'd move adjournment at this point.
The motion is.
I'd move.
Wait, we have Alderman Wynn and Alderman Wilson.
Madam Mayor, I would like to move that we restore the dental health clinic into the budget. I do, I agree that 1,800 or 1,900 child visits to the clinic is too much to sacrifice. And as you said at the last meeting, Madam Mayor, when we did cut out the health services three years ago, we had a very clear understanding that all of those services were going to be transferred to another source. Probably my closest friend in Evanston is a pediatrician, and she works in the Evanston Hospital Public Aid Clinic. And when I described this issue to her, she said the most difficult phone call she has to make, where she has the most trouble finding additional medical help is with dental issues. Everything else she can find, but not dental care. So until we really know that these services can be provided in Evanston, I don't believe that we should take this out from our city services.
Seconded by Alderman Holmes. Alderman Wilson.
I'm just, I'm going to echo what Alderman Wynn mentioned. I know the city staff, I've looked and other people have looked to see if there's anything comparable or acceptable to, you know, meet these needs. And no one's come up with anything. So I'm troubled by that. So I would, at this juncture, go along with Alderman Wynn's motion.
Alderman Fisk and then Alderman Rainey.
I agree with Alderman Wynn's motion. I think the problem with dental services, especially for children, is that unlike a broken bone, if you can't afford it, sometimes those dental services are put off. And as most of us know, a dental problem will continue throughout your life. And I think it was stated very clearly here tonight that the services are not present in Evanston for the children. And so I support that motion, support what Alderman Wilson had to say as well.
Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I would like to know what our health department staff did about communicating with dental providers to assist us with this problem. Alderman Burris and I were just casually looking around, and we found that there is a community dental clinic at University of Illinois at Chicago whose, one of their primary goals is to service communities that have populations that are unable to access dental care. And I'm wondering, have we made any contact with the University of Illinois at Chicago Dental School? And, I mean, I don't need to know right now, but what I want to know is going forward.
Find out right now.
Did we ask them? I found it at 11:00, didn't I?
Good evening. Evanda Thomas, Director of Health and Human Services. We did outreach Chicago Dental School in Chicago to ask if we could be a host site for their residential program. And they said that we were on a list of many and that they would get back to us.
Now, what school was that?
It's the Chicago, the Illinois, University of Illinois Chicago Dental Association on Taylor Street in Chicago, Illinois.
It's University of Illinois Dental School.
Yes.
And that's at the U of I Chicago.
Yes, that's correct.
But did we get a letter from them? I mean, was it a phone call? Did we meet with them? I'm concerned.
Actually, we met with them. The medical director and I met with them face to face, and we did send letters. And we scheduled a meeting, and they said that they would get back to us. We were a list of many requesting to be a host site for their residential program.
I'm just wondering if some of us reach out. Could we get that contact information?
Of course.
And I would love to make some effort, because I know that there are people in my ward who utilize the service.
Sure.
And Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, as we think we've mentioned at the previous budget workshop, we have reached out to a couple of local foundations who remain interested. They were just not able to make a commitment at that period of time. Actually, the Evanston Chamber of Commerce, I don't know that Jonathan's still here, but he has offered on behalf of the chamber to reach out to the Association of Dentists here in Evanston to see if there's options there as well. So if the council were to choose to continue the program, I think we would continue to look for community partners.
Yes.
And if we're able to come with a good solution in the next 12 months, we'd let you know, so that's at least an option for you to consider. But as I've mentioned before, I think it's important that we look for community partners on all services that we formally provided. That's not something that has happened in the past, and I've directed Evanda to move forward to find those community partners. We hope to be coming back to you over the next several months.
Right. And many of those partners have contacted us directly, because they've been watching the process.
So, report.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Thomas. I'd support the motion, Alderman Wynn. My concern is really for the 50% of the patients at the dental clinic who are limited English-speaking, specifically Spanish. And of the four providers we've been able to find that take the all-kids insurance, I think only two of them have clinicians who are Spanish-speaking. So imagining half of 1,800, 1,900 children going to two providers is quite overwhelming to contemplate.
Alderman Burris.
I also wouldn't disagree with Alderman Wynn's proposal or motion. I think that we can't get rid of the dental clinic. However, I do agree that we need to find alternate funding. And I'm not sure if you've reached out to the Evanston Hospital Dental Clinic. And if you have, could we have a written response from what they had to say? They have an amazing dental clinic there. Also, if you could let us know which foundations that you reached out to and what are their ideas for funding, I would be happy to be involved in part of that as well. It's a really important service. But going back to, I know that we got rid of a lot of health services, including family planning several years ago, that haven't been replaced. Also had the meeting with Heartland Alliance. Their health services, they do a dental clinic. They just opened one at, I believe, Roosevelt High School for teens. So that might be an opportunity as well, since they just don't do health. They also do dental as we move forward. They're a great organization with a lot of capacity.
And they are planning on coming to Evanston. It's been moved and seconded, seeing no further lights. Could we have a roll call?
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Dental clinic stays. All right, Alderman Wilson.
I move that we accept the city manager's recommendation with regard to the ECMC.
Accept the city manager's recommendation in regards to ECMC. Is there a second? Yes, there was, okay. Alderman Shaw-Baptiste.
Alderman Wilson.
All right, Alderman Wilson, you want to.
Just very briefly. It's not my intention for the center to be closed down. I think it's an important asset to the community. I think that your mission will continue on. I don't know that you need that much funding for next year. From what I've seen, it seems to me that you should be able to sustain yourself for the year. It's an independent organization. It's not really, it's not a city department. The city shouldn't have responsibility for outreach, it shouldn't have the responsibility for developing a plan. I'm interested in seeing what you all come up with. I'm interested in seeing what the proposal is for next year. And hopefully, the group will be on a solid track for being more sustainable and more self-sustaining. And I think that's important. So I'm, of course, moving that we accept the city manager's recommendation.
Alderman Shaw-Baptiste.
Now, I do realize that ECMC shows a surplus, some net assets, that then says that they should be able to continue for the next year, whole and healthy. But we're talking about a year where we are asking them to make some radical moves, to move their operation. And, you know, the deal with ETHS or with the city of Evanston or whoever is not finalized. They do have a significant rent obligation that if they're unable to move, they'll have to maintain. So I think that the cut of $200,000 hampers that kind of transition that we are asking them to do. So I disagree with the $200,000 proposal. I would suggest that we accept the $100,000 reduction. Allow them the year to go ahead and make the transition, to set up, to re-equip themselves. And I think one of the explanations that I got from them as to the purpose of the surplus that they were keeping was to invest in new equipment going forward. And we know in the field of technology, changes are occurring by the minute. So I would disagree with cutting the $200,000, because I think it would hamper the possibility of them transitioning, getting to the point of being able to sustain a long-term, lower budget with the reduction of, the elimination of the rent and to move forward. So I would disagree with that. I would ask you guys to accept the cut of $100,000 at this time.
Alderman Rainey.
Alderman John Baptiste, I think you're not going to get support for that. But in reviewing, you might, in reviewing the audit, it looks to me like they could sustain themselves for $50,000 this year and maybe come back to us next year. But I'm not interested in them sustaining themselves, really. I'm interested in them looking within and moving forward. And I think because this is kind of a surprise move on our part, that if we could allot them $50,000 this year and, you know, get, see if they can, see, first of all, I wouldn't want to give them $50,000 and then ask them, can you make it on this? But to meet with them and see if that would sustain them for the year so that they could make permanent arrangements going forward. I believe that they could get out of their lease. They've been good tenants, and they've been there forever, so, just a thought.
I'm not clear on what you're proposing. So you're proposing a $150,000 cut?
I'm proposing, no, 50. Yeah, 150,000. I'm proposing giving back 50,000. We do get, we do get the franchise fee. Communities do use it to support the local cable channel. I think they can, they can make arrangements. And I would hope that they could sustain themselves in another fashion after this coming year.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support the motion and have some questions. One is wondering what ECMC's budget would look like without the money from our general revenue fund. That is, what kind of, what kind of shape would this budget take? What kind of cuts would they make? Where is the FAD in the ECMC budget that our cut would force them to make? ECMC, the way I see it, has some opportunities for some meaningful partnerships to both find the funding, find the location. And perhaps ECMC also has the reserves sufficient to sustain them through the term of that lease that keeps them on Hartree. And my last question has to do with our support of religious programming through ECMC. Are there anything, is there anything that prevents us from funding ECMC to the extent that it has religious programming?
City attorney?
Alderman Grover, I'd be happy to look into that for you.
Alderman Holmes.
The memo that we received, that's dated January 25th, from Steve, in regards to the financial information. I don't know if everybody has it or not, but.
Part of the packet?
I'm sorry.
Part of the packet?
Yeah, it is a part of the packet. I'm sorry, it's a part, yes.
Yes, I see.
Yeah. On page 1, on 124, page 94. 94 of 124. So I'm just trying to understand, item number four. So there's 354,000 in actual cash on hand, and then 114,000 in receivables, accounts receivables, which I guess would be your.
And Alderman Holmes, members of the council, that's from our reading of their audits. Dee Drazner, our Assistant Finance Director, did that. I think, as Mr. Bartaba has said, that they internally segregate portions of that $354,000. And he may be best to say that. Again, what an accountant says is put aside, and what an organization says is put aside are often two different things. So I think, Madam Mayor, if maybe we can ask Mr. Bartaba.
Absolutely.
To explain from his audit dated.
Yeah, and I.
June 30, '09.
Yeah, it was dated December 9th, actually, 2009. It's in the actual audit that was sent to us on the 9/90, on the audit. The date on that was December 9th, I think, 2009, at the bottom, to show where it came from.
This might make it clearer and maybe a little bit easier. I've got a copy of our current balances from the bank, so you can look at this. Right now, we have a remaining balance of $96,000. That's normally where we would take three months' revenue aside for covering budget through the year. We have $111,750 in restricted monies in a business classic account. That's what we're using for. That's what we're using for purchasing current equipment. We also kept monies for the restricted equipment monies that were given in previous years for another $100,000 in a separate savings account. And then lastly, there's $100,000 that would be general fund money, which is what we were putting on the table to offer. So basically, it would leave us a remaining budget of $96,000 that we're currently working through this year. I will give you a copy of this, so you can take a look at it.
So actually, then you have 300 and 300 and 300-plus.
Right. But you're going back again to that restricted area, which we just have to make clear.
But it's cash. But it is cash.
It...
But it's, yeah, I understand it's restricted, but...
Right. The 211 is the one that we can't spend on anything except for equipment, because that's that 35 cents a month pass-through that the cable subscribers are paying for.
And Alderman Holmes, I think, and we could certainly go into more detail later, it's restricted under federal law for use on equipment. There is, there is not a lot of case law, court case law, as to what communities can or cannot do. It is restricted under federal law, but I think there's generally a wide latitude. ECMC is a private nonprofit, is saying that they have restricted it by policy of their independent board of directors, but under federal law, there probably is more latitude as to how that money could be spent.
But it is also brought out in the cable franchise, which is what we're adhering to.
And again, I think reasonable people could interpret that language differently.
And in theory, the idea for the equipment monies was also as a possibility for move-out money if we did have to do the reconstruct or move to another location.
Right. So I think there is some flexibility, but again, ECMC has been stated as a private nonprofit, and their board may set policies and procedures as they see fit.
It leaves us with...
Alderman John Baptiste?
But Steve, maybe you might want to stay up there, because I'm not sure whether that lends clarity.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, and 354 is actually 100,000.
Assuming that we can disagree with whether or not the restriction is something that they, is enforceable and is something that they must do, as it stands right now, if federal policy is that that's restricted, I think we can assume that that's what it is. Then the question is, how much money is left over? Because the, you know, we operate from the notion that there's 300 and some thousand dollars that's sitting there that they could use for operation and for moving expenses, et cetera, et cetera. And apparently, that's not the case. While it may be, we may be able to decipher this down the line, but that's what I'm suggesting, that we stay, you know, within the proposed $100,000 reduction and, you know, strongly suggest that they make the move to save the $95,000 a year that they're paying for rent. If there's some expenditures that must be incurred for equipment, then we need to see what the plan is for that during the course of the year as well. That's what I'm suggesting.
Alderman Holmes?
Alderman John Baptiste, I'm going to just say one more thing about the money, and I want to move on to another point. And I understand about the 354. I got that. Now, I, really what they have on hand in cash is 196,000, which would be the 96 and then the 100. I got that. The other 222 would be restricted, okay? But if I, if I understood your memo to us, the move is really off of the table, because they can't get out of their lease for 22 more months. So we can forget about the move, at least for the next two years.
Yeah, that's...
Right?
That is our...
Unless you're going to pay $200,000 to get out of the lease. Is that not correct?
Yeah, the issue right now is whether or not we can get out of the lease without the 12-month window that they were asking for. Currently, they, if not, that means we're there 22 months.
Well, yeah, because your memo didn't read as if we could get out of the lease, unless I was reading it correctly.
No, you were reading it properly. As a matter of fact, I got a call today from the owner of the property and basically said, we put that 12-month in there for this purpose, and obviously, that area over there has a lot of vacancies, so there is some concern about filling it. We've talked about whether or not, if we can sustain long enough for the 22 months, that would allow us to actually get into a new center, and that's probably more appropriate moving time schedule if we look at it realistically.
But just following up on what the city manager said, because you are a separate entity, it's not the city, you really would have enough cash money to, the city's talking about cutting 100 and, I mean...
200.
200,000, leaving you 148. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then the 100,000 that you have in the bank would give you then 248 plus the 96 or whatever, whatever fundraising or whatever you're going to do, that you would have to figure out how to maneuver that budget. Is that correct? Is that...
I think your numbers sound right. It's the only issue is whether or not the, you did one, give me the 246 number again, how you came to that?
Um...
Sorry.
I am, if the city's going to give you, if the city is cutting you 2, you have 1, 348, you have a budget, I'm looking at our figures, so I may be wrong, but 471,000 is your total revenue, right? And 348, which came from the city, your expenses are 450. So if the city's going to, is recommending a cut of 200, that left 148, then you would have 100, that's in the savings account?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And then, now the 96, you'd need to have three months. Is that three months of salary?
That's basically three months, yeah.
Okay. So that's 248, right? 248,000 that you would have, and then you have to do your fundraising or whatever else to do that. I'm not even looking at the restricted. So you'd have to come up with your own budget in terms of how you were going to manage with that.
So you're saying we'd still have to basically cover 200,000 to get from 248 up to the 4 something that we have right now? Yeah, that's...
I mean, that's, I'm just trying to figure where you are.
Right.
Is that, I'm just looking at, in that...
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and realistically, that's where you get to the cuts, and, you know, again, when it starts to become a payroll issue, would mean two or three of the positions, so that starts to limit really what the center can do. And obviously, when we have someone that does public, someone that does educational as their job, that's going to have a direct effect on those channels.
I understand that. But then, I mean, it doesn't mean that the center is closing, though, I mean, because I think that's kind of a scare, that...
Well, let's be honest, again, we take the reserve realises there. 12 months from now, no new revenues come in, the $200,000 cuts there, yeah, we're pretty close. I mean, you've got, you've got me standing around the building in slippers and jammies.
I'm sure you are going to do some fundraising now that you know that...
Well, and again, that's understandable, but as we've spoken before, the funding process is obviously changing completely from what was set up in the original nonprofit concept of the cable franchise monies.
Okay. I've just got to go back and read some more, because I, the nonprofit was set up on the premise that the city was going to be funding it. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it was always a part of the franchise fee passed back as a way of keeping it open, and you can see that was our primary fundering through the past 10 years. So obviously, that was, you know, nothing in writing that specified that, and that's why it's, you know, an understandable cut to put on the table. But realistically, to see the organization go from nothing to having to, you know, completely be self-funded is a little difficult to assume.
Yeah, something similar to the social services that have taken almost a 40% cut over the last 10 years. Yeah, I understand. Okay.
Alderman Rainey?
Steve, I wanted to ask you, one of the things that you read about in financial journals, and especially real estate journals, is that lots of people with long-term leases are renegotiating because owners know that, you know, there's trouble in River City. And I'm wondering if you broach that topic with your landlord?
We haven't currently, and I think that's just because we knew we were in the last two years of the deal. This has been a five-year lease that we've been on, and the pricing, obviously, as well as it's gone up over the years that we've been there, but you could see this year it was dramatically less than previous contracts because of what the market was doing. We didn't have that big of an increase. We've been pretty much paying in that 90 to 95 range for quite a while.
How long, how long have you been there?
We've been in that building, oh, I'd say '86, roughly. Yeah, no, wait, actually, cable came in in '83.
20-year tenant? You're 20, 20-plus, you're a tenant? Who's your landlord? Who's the landlord?
Reed Beidler from Lark Management.
Uh-huh.
So...
I mean...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think you can...
Reed Beidler ought to throw himself on his knees and praise God that you have been his good tenant all those years. And I, I would really encourage you to talk about this, really. Second of all, I don't know what the franchise says, but what does it say about showing city council meetings, high school meetings, District 65 meetings? Is there a charge for that to those government bodies?
The franchise does not have wording specifically about the programming, per se, and what funding would go towards that. We have set up a deal with District 65 that they're paying monies specifically for the services. With the city, it's become a little bit different. We had always included, since we were getting a big part of the franchise fee, council meetings were, didn't get charged, and then we started doing two-for, three-for-one on Monday nights when you did three meetings, two of those were free, and you'd only get charged for the one meeting. So some of that obviously would change, but not dramatically the funding. In regards to programming that we do, let's say if it's for the Health Department, the Fire Department, those are not charged. So it's a little bit different between the government access and the educational access. The thought was that this...
Maybe you ought to reconsider that.
I mean, if we're, if you're not going to be getting, you know, I don't, I mean, I'm
beginning to believe that the people who are saying that you really can't do a government body's meeting justice with a flip camera might be telling the truth. I'm not sure. I'm not an expert in that field. But, so, I mean, I don't know. You have the equipment, and we have the need, so maybe there needs to be, you know, restructuring of those charges.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, if there wasn't, if there wasn't money coming from the city via the franchise assets...
Oh, I understand.
That would certainly become an area where we would start to charge.
Getting 29,000 plus a month, yeah, I can see why you were gentle with your charges.
Alderman John Baptiste?
I'd like to suggest that we conclude this discussion on Wednesday and in the interim. Since we have some, we're speculating as to what the lease says or not, let's have our city attorney take a look at the lease and take a look at the franchise agreement and get back to us with an opinion, because I was under the impression, Steve, that the lease was up in 2010, and so you would have an opportunity to renegotiate.
There was an out clause this year in November, but we needed 12 months to activate it, so there, we're trying to be sticklers about the 12-month.
Okay. Well, you know, I think that we should let attorney review to see whether we could get out of this, turn it into a month-to-month, you know, reduced amount or whatever. That's what I would suggest.
That's, I'm fine with that.
Okay, great.
All right.
On that basis, then...
Alderman Wilson?
Right. I would make a move, a motion that we fix a time to adjourn, and move that we adjourn this meeting to meet here again at 6:00 PM Wednesday, February 3rd.
Thank you.
Second.
If you're not, you're not adjourned in this meeting?
No.
No, continuing it.
Continuing it.
Right. So it's, is continuing, continuing this present meeting to meet again for further proceedings at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, February 3rd.
Second.
All right. Could we have a roll call vote? No motion to continue.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman John Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
We don't have to take that. We've got to put it in our cabinet. We'll have to run around with this.
Yeah.